Ending in the audience forever, so we're going to get started. If the clerk could call the roll, please.
Mr. Anderson?
Here.
Mr. Castillo is not here. Ms. Gill?
Here.
Ms. Litten?
Here.
Mr. Reitinger?
Here.
And Ms. Russell?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd ask unanimous consent for adoption of the agenda. Seeing no objection, we'll move on. Dr. Noonan, the first item up is the walk and talk M.D. expansion.
Yes. Good evening, members of the board, community, and staff. We are pleased to be here tonight and really excited to be able to share tonight's spotlight on learning. It's a little bit longer, so I just sort of share that with you as a, perhaps not a warning, just maybe with some excitement. It's a little bit longer than our normal, but it's an opportunity for the first time for many of us to see what's happening on the inside of Mount Daniel. So tonight, you will see myself along with a gentleman by the name of Tom Bizzari, who is the superintendent of the construction crew up at Mount Daniel, touring around, walking and talking and looking at some of the spaces that are there. I would invite the board and the community to use their imagination a little bit as you're looking at some of these spaces to envision what they're going to look like. But sooner rather than later, we are going to be closing in the entire addition, working full speed ahead, and are on track for an on-time delivery of the new addition in mid-October and potentially maybe a little before that. So tonight is the first opportunity for all of us to get a glimpse inside, so please enjoy. My hope for today is that we have a chance to kind of do a little walk and talk and talk a little bit about where we are. I'm really excited, first of all, about the progress that you all have made over the course of the last, you know, two, three months here at Mount Dan. You guys have really taken off. It seems like there's a lot of momentum moving on this project, and we are in a good place to be finished on time and hopefully on budget, too. So thanks for your work.
We'll definitely be on time and on budget. It's pretty nice when the spring weather breaks, everybody can start to run a little faster, it's more forgiving. The rain slowed us down a little bit, but we put a good team together, led by your guys, and Arcadis has helped to basically put a good plan in action so that our subcontractors can run through and do what they do best.
Yeah.
Get in and get out and get on to the next phase of it.
That's great. So where are we right now? Tell us a little bit about this.
Right now, we've basically completed all the roofing and the enclosure of the entire building, so we're almost weather tight. We've got a few miscellaneous windows, open doorways, that we're using for logistics purposes, more than necessarily leaving them out for any design reason.
We're here in the gym now, right?
So we're in the gymnasium, the multipurpose room, right?
Yep.
We've got roofing going up above for all the mechanical systems, so ductwork, sprinkler, electrical of all kinds. And this is also a big space, so we're using it for storage. So you'll see a lot of material that doesn't necessarily belong to this room, but it's nice to shake it all out as we go distribute it to some of the spaces that we're choosing to finish a little earlier. So we're down on the first floor in the lower level. We're kind of at the central corridor between the cafeteria, media center, as well as some of the classrooms on the east end, connected to the main gymnasium. We've finished the drywall, we've put on our prime coats of painting, we've started to put the first coats of some of the paint on the door frames and some of the walls, and then we're just getting ready to start our ceiling tile. So minus the drywall and the material that's staged in the room, you can get the idea of a typical classroom. You'll have the main teaching wall, usually in an accent color. I think it's all the same for most of the rooms. Exterior windows are fully installed, operational, inspected and tested. We're getting ready to run the ceiling grid in these rooms and start thinking about our finishes. It's pretty exciting now to see some final products start to appear.
Yeah. So tell us about this space. This looks like a...
We transitioned from the main corridor into the media center. You've got a very large, open space, lots of natural light. We've left the window and door out by choice right now until we graded out the exterior and poured the little sidewalk pad that runs out, and then we're going to finish off the window and officially close ourselves off on the north side. Interior of the space, we've got a design of the central reception desk over here on the left side. You've got open book stacks around the middle, and then you've got some perimeter offices and janitorial closets, like a conference room style setup.
So the skylight.
Across the hall is the cafeteria, which you can obviously see the natural light takes a huge effect here, a little bit different than some of the classrooms on the first floor. It's a really nice feature. We've got ceiling grid that'll run around the entire perimeter, where you see all the exposed steel. We've got tekton wall panels that run around at the mid-level, and helps with the acoustics in here. This is the center of all transportation. We've got the elevator. We're working on setting the rails right now. We're going to set the platform soon. Stair C, which goes up to second floor and third floor.
So this is the new front door.
This will be the new front door. You'll walk into the security vestibule, you'll have your security desk here on the side, closed doors that nobody can enter without coming into the main office. We've got three reception desks, which will be shaped nicely here, all kind of turned on the angle. Vice principal's office, principal's office, conference room.
So it's the teacher work area. Nice. Good space. Folks that come together.
And it's, design-wise, it's pretty centrally located, so everybody has ease of access to come into here.
Nice.
You can come right out, jump on the elevator and go up.
There you go. We're right back to Grand Central Station, pretty much.
We'll head up to the second floor.
So here we are, sort of just in the main area again on the second floor. That'll be where the elevator is. This'll overlook.
This'll actually be the hallway that connects to the existing building.
Okay, so here's the old ramp, right? So this is where the old meets the new.
So we will be forming out and pouring a concrete ramp so that you walk on a slight slope down and connect with the existing building. Entering into any of the classrooms, you've got your cubby sets and kind of your foyer of the classroom before you transition into the open teaching space.
Got it.
We've got some casework and sinks scattered around the outside. You've got a window that overlooks down in...
This goes into the cafeteria.
The cafeteria, so this is what we were looking down from below before, or looking up from below. And then again, you've got a great natural light present coming in, or presence coming in through the skylight into the windows.
The fact that the drywall is purple is not lost on us, by the way. So this is the outdoor classroom, right?
This'll be your outdoor classroom patio.
Okay.
The pavers have arrived.
Oh, wow.
We've got our fencing panels that have arrived for the exterior.
Yep.
But you'll be able to come out from either entrance, or either entrance and exit on the second floor, onto this walkable paver surface.
And so we'll be able to do some planting and, you know, and pots and do some other kinds of...
You get a ton of natural light here in the morning. So east is this direction, you're getting a ton of natural light all morning, and then right around noon or so, it'll go off the backside of the building.
This is great. So we're on the third floor.
On the third floor.
More classrooms that look similar to what we have downstairs.
Yep.
Yeah, they'll be a little different, just most of these upstairs, I think, are second grade versus first grade.
Kind of a quick view of that wonderful skyline.
Oh, yeah, the great skylight, yeah.
Second floor classroom, attached to the central core where that skylight's bringing in all the natural light. All of the white area that says Tyvek right now will receive that metal paneling.
Okay.
You'll get a pair, but you'll have just a really nice finished space everybody will look out onto.
So we're on top of the cafeteria right here?
On top of the...
Or the gym, I'm sorry.
Top of the gymnasium.
Yeah, okay. Got it.
And then that'll be the admini... All from the far distance would be on top of the administration entrance.
Okay, got it.
The main drive entrance coming from the southwest side stays the same until you get to where the largest part is, the stop sign in the tree and that spool of wire that you see there. That's when the grade change really takes into effect, and we cut ourselves from there all the way up to here, and everything gets dropped about four to five feet.
So people might ask, what about all the storm water that's going to come in here? What happens with that water that comes off that grade?
So the new design has a stormwater retention tank built in here. So all the stormwater is calculated that's going to flow back here, comes into the inlets, the site drains, there's a trench drain near the loading dock. All of that connects into this underground stormwater tank.
Got it.
If you imagine the area where these four cars are lined up, that would be the south side of the tank, and then it extends to the north.
Huge. This is really a great opportunity to see the building from inside and out and get a little preview of what great things there are to come.
We're excited for our final push in bringing this thing in for a landing.
Right on. Thanks a lot, Tom.
Of course.
Appreciate it. So that was just a very quick tour. Couple of things, as you were observing that, to note, one is that they're finishing the floors from the bottom up, so as the first floor gets complete, the second floor will be done, and then the third floor ultimately. And I just want to take a second to thank the Mount Daniel community, because we had to make some modifications to some schedules for the last two weeks, particularly around recess. We did not cancel recess, I want to assure everyone of that, but what we did do is we did close the playground and asked students to participate in recess in different places. And the reason that we did close that playground for the last two weeks was to pick up some time so that we could change out the big water retention storm system that he was mentioning in the video. So you may have seen in the back the big concrete boxes, that's the old retention system. They're going to put a new retention system in. And then the grade, it's a little bit hard to tell in the front, but it's actually going to really be cut down significantly to come down to the front door. So when we said, so this is the front of the building, you might see that it kind of went straight uphill, that whole hill is going to be gone, and it's going to be brought down to that level, and that's where the new bus loop is going to be as well. So super excited about what's coming and look forward to being done.
Well, congratulations, Dr. Noonan. That was wonderful to see. Any questions or comments from the board? Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
And thank you to John and the folks who put that together. It was a wonderful presentation. That's a great segue. We move to the third item of the agenda, the third agenda item, recognitions, reports, and appointments. And the first is the appointment of the new Mount Daniel principal. Dr. Noonan?
Thank you, Chairman Reitinger, or it is Vice Chairman Reitinger, excuse me. It is an absolute pleasure this evening to present to you our candidate, our selected candidate for the new principalship at Mount Daniel Elementary School. We'd like to welcome Mr. Tim Kasek. Mr. Kasek, hello. Welcome. I'm going to become a little, I may become a little less formal for a minute here, just to talk a little bit about Tim. I've had an opportunity to know Tim and his work for the last 10 years. Tim currently serves as the principal at Crestwood Elementary School in Fairfax County and has been there for eight years as principal, and prior to that, served as an assistant principal at Washington Mill Elementary School, and before that was a teacher at Braddock Elementary School. Tim's 20-year career at this point has been filled with accolades and extraordinary achievement, to include being named First Year Principal of the Year, being named Best Principal by the FCFT, which is the Fairfax County Teachers Federation. So he's well-loved by the teachers as well in Fairfax. He has a strong record of improving student achievement, working well in professional development, and one of the things that I think is Tim's true strength is that he comes to this work as a teacher first. And as we were interviewing him in his final interview, we talked about, you know, what would you do if you needed to support a teacher in a guided reading lesson? And he said, well, I would sit down and I would model, you know, a lesson for that teacher right in the classroom. I would do the mini lesson, and then I would move forward with the next phase in guided reading, and went right through it. And I thought, you know, having somebody that knows the work, that can dig into the work and can do the work right alongside our professionals is certainly somebody who can be of value to our system. So that's the professional side of Tim. Let me talk just a second about the personal side of Tim. Tim is a City of Falls Church resident, which makes this appointment, in my opinion, extra special. Tim has a daughter who is a student at Mary Ellen Henderson Middle School, and I'll let Tim in a minute introduce his family, and has a son who's a current kindergartner at Mount Daniel Elementary School, and he gets to have his dad as the principal for the next two years. Good thing you're not a troublemaker, mister. And anyway, Tim is an outstanding resident here in the City of Falls Church, and in his final comments in his interview, he said, "What an honor it would be to be able to come back and give back to the community that has given him so much." And so for us to be able to bring someone in to our little elementary school up on the hill to complete this construction project, which he, by the way, has experience doing because he completed a construction project very similar to Mount Daniel at Crestwood in the community where he lives, and to be a principal where his son is in school and where his family is, is something I think extraordinarily special and something that I think many of us aspire to be able to do. So with that, Mr. Chair, I present to you our candidate, Tim Kasek, for your approval.
Thank you very much. Welcome, Mr. Kasek. Glad to have you here. Any questions or comments from the board? Then let's proceed to the vote. Ms. Goodell, could we do a roll call vote on this, please?
So we just need a motion?
Oh, sorry. I'll take a motion.
I move that we appoint Tim Kasek as the Mount Daniel principal. Second motion.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Castillo?
Aye.
Ms. Gill?
Aye.
Ms. Litten?
Aye.
Mr. Reitinger?
Yes.
And Ms. Russell?
Aye.
Thank you. It's unanimous.
Thank you very much. So, welcome aboard, Mr. Kasek. I'd like to give you an opportunity to talk to the board and the community. Thank you for taking this on. I think as a Falls Church city resident, you know that Mount Daniel, of all the places in FCCPS, really is the heart of the community. It's a thing that brings everyone together, and people will talk about their Mount Daniel experiences, you know, as parents or as students long into their future. So thank you for taking this on, especially as we open a new building, so please, we'd love to hear from you for a few minutes.
Great. Thank you very much, and I would like to thank...
Do you want to come to the podium?
Oh, sorry. Thank you, board. I thank you for entrusting me with this very precious commodity that we have here in Falls Church. Some of my daughter's best friends were made right in kindergarten, so I know exactly what you mean when you say it truly is the heart of the school system and the heart of the city. I'm so excited to have this opportunity. When it was brought to my attention that there would be an opportunity, I said to myself, "What a great opportunity to give back." As being a resident that has, in a little city that has given me so much, I'm so excited to be able to do that. The hard part has been saying goodbye to the people that I work with currently. I talked a lot during my interview about the relationships that I've built and how deep they are and how much they mean to me. I made the announcement on Monday afternoon simultaneously when Dr. Noonan was letting the staff at Mount Daniel know that I would be coming over, and it was a little bit of a shock to my folks, but the thing about having those relationships is that they're not going to end. I have people that I know that I can rely on, and I get to have new relationships here in the City of Falls Church. The other hard part was keeping the secret from a six-year-old. And just to illustrate that story, last night, we did drop the news to Nate that I would be his principal during dinner, and he got this really great smile on his face, and I could see his wheels start to spin. And the first thing that kind of he thought of was, "You know, at Mount Daniel, we're not allowed to play tag. Can we talk about this?" So he's trying to leverage some, you know, some resources here, but we'll have a discussion, but I kind of like that rule. The last thing I want to say is that eight years ago, when I became the Crestwood principal and thinking about the relationships that I made, there was a cohort of fifth-grade students that had a lot of personality and kids that I kept tabs on all the way through. Today, I was at Eagle Bank Arena over at George Mason University. It was the Lee High School graduation, and I got to watch students who were in fifth grade my first year walk across the stage, get their diplomas, as they take their next steps, whether they're joining the military or going on to a four-year college or a two-year college, or whatever they're doing in the future. I look forward to doing that same thing here in Falls Church. Our youngest learners at the preschool and at the Mount Daniel, eventually they will get through Mason, and look at all these wonderful Mason students we have here today. There are so many opportunities for our kids and families, and being a part of their life from the time they're so young and seeing them all the way through, it really is an honor to be able to do that. So thank you again, and thank you, community.
Should you come up with your family? We'll take a picture?
Yes, absolutely. My wife, Jen, my daughter Clara, and my son Nate. Would you please join me up here for a picture?
Here we go, one, two, three. One, two, three, and one more time. There we go. Congratulations.
Thank you all very much. We'll go to the next item on the agenda, which is item 3.02, Team 1418 Robotics Highlights.
Well, we are very excited to welcome Team 1418 under the great leadership of a number of people, Steve Knight, John Baloo, Kenny George, and the like, and we... I'm going to turn it over to you guys, actually.
So hello, good evening, and thank you, first and foremost. I'm Eric Boson. I'm president and programming captain of the George Mason High School Robotics Team 1418. So this year, the 35 members of Team 1418 along...
Want to show the video first?
Yeah, sure. So this is the robot that we built this year. Every year, at the starting of the... Okay. There you go. Okay, so this year, as you saw up there a little bit, the 35 members of Team 1418 alongside, aided by our 10 mentors and alumni assistants, we were profoundly lucky to participate in another exciting educational season of the FIRST Robotics Competition, or FRC for short. So after the year, the reveal of this year's robotics challenge in early January, we spent six weeks developing and building this year sophisticated 120-pound robot. We were challenged this year to build a robot to manipulate, as you saw, some milk crate-shaped cubes on a basketball-sized field, stacking them in 3v3 matches against other teams from all over the world, and attempting to defend against other teams who were trying to, as it were, tip the scales in their favor. So, pardon. So during this year's build season, we recruited 15 new members. We worked for a collective 5,796 hours, and we wrote 10,447 lines of code. These are all new records for this year, and we're all proud of all of them. So as you saw up there a little bit, that was an older video, but we participated in two tournaments at local high schools, first Battlefield and later Hayfield. We ranked second in both. We then qualified for the Chesapeake District Championship, which was located at the Xfinity Center in Maryland. At that competition, we made it to the quarterfinals, and we won the judges' award for excellence in general performance and the Innovation and Control Award for our programming and our user interface. So we then went to the World Championship based on our previous performance. Even though we didn't actually win a competition, we ranked highly enough in each of them to earn a spot to go to Worlds. So we performed very well there as well. We had some mechanical problems, which unfortunately prevented us from sweeping the championship, but you can't have everything. So one of our freshman members, programmer Joe Carpenter, who's actually here today, said that being part of 1418 this year has given him experience applying knowledge outside of a classroom setting and collaborating with others. He's learned so many new skills already in his first year and has started using actual industry tools like the command line. It's an amazing extracurricular experience, and not to mention a great way to prepare for the real learning environment. Sophomore Tahsin Shike, who's also here, says that through the robotics team, she, quote, "Found mentors to support her, amazing friends to rely on, and mechanical skills she never would have built otherwise." "It's so important," she says, "that we have a place to learn how to build things, considering it's a skill that everyone will need in the future." I myself was fortunate enough to become one of the 10 students chosen out of the world's 91,000 first students for the FIRST Robotics Dean's List Award this year at the World Championship, which is an award which will provide me with college scholarship, access to prestigious educational opportunities, and a jumpstart on my career in computer science. You can see me on the screen with, oop, pardon, you can see me on the screen with the deans of admissions of MIT and Yale, and also our favorite, Betsy DeVos. So this year, we also expanded our educational outreach efforts to the community. We worked with TJ Elementary School to run an eight-week after-school camp where students learn the basics of programming and robot engineering. We tried to open their minds to new and interesting fields of STEM, science, technology, engineering, and math. We've also demonstrated our robots at countless different events in the community, and we additionally worked this year to propose a bill to the Virginia House in order to provide funding for running robotics teams to underprivileged schools in our state. Unfortunately, that bill didn't pass, but we made a lot of progress. We're hoping to try again next year. So each and every one of our members has benefited from being a member of our team this year. Through our FIRST Robotics Competition, every one of them has learned new skills, whether they be mechanical, engineering, programming, or outreach and business development in a professional work environment. As the world's economy globalizes and shifts towards knowledge industry, especially technical industry, as we all know, it's, these kinds of programs like FIRST are incredibly important to assure that our nation's economy, our state's economy, our city's economy continue to develop as they need to, to meet the challenges of the coming century. Under FIRST twin philosophies of gracious professionalism and cooperatition, which are great, great mixes up of two different words, but our teams have learned, worked collaboratively with and competed alongside teams from Chantilly to San Jose and from Tijuana to Taipei. Those are all actual places from which teams came that we competed with this year. So we absolutely could not reach the heights we do without the school board's continuous support, and we are incredibly, incredibly grateful for the city's unbridled enthusiasm for the Mason Robotics Program. This year, we also fundraised around $10,000 through donations from local businesses and by running various fundraising events, as I briefly touched on earlier. We can't wait to have another incredible season recruiting as many new, hard-working members as we can. We hope that the school board will continue to helping us towards our participating in FIRST Robotics Competition, a program which, from which we all have gained so much and which is really about more than robots. So robotics isn't just a club, it's a family and a team and a social movement, and we are deeply, deeply grateful for your continued support of this program. Thank you so much for your time.
I just want to take an opportunity to again congratulate every member of this team. Thank you again for your support this year, but again, we've always felt that this is an important addendum to what George Mason ever hoped to do in terms of, you know, making education real and practical and stimulating. It was a very, very enjoyable experience to go to these competitions. But anyhow, congratulations to everyone who was involved. I'm sorry we couldn't bring the robot today for the first time, but it's crowded in here, and, you know, maybe you'll get a chance to see it sometime, you know, in the fall.
We would love to see that.
So hold on, guys, hold on for one sec. First, any comments from the school board, questions? Thank you all very much. I didn't get a chance to make the competitions this year, but I was there last year, and it's one of the most enjoyable parts of being on the school board, watching students compete. We're going to hear from athletes in a moment, but the robotics competition is just as fascinating to watch as any other competition. And since I was originally an engineer, not to talk too much about myself, I really enjoy watching that in particular. Congratulations. It's a great program. I'm sorry that all of you won't get a chance to work in the new robotics lab that'll be built in the new high school, but you are setting up the successes for the people who will follow after you, and you will see your names and photographs, I'm sure, emblazoned on the wall for a long time to come. So before you leave, can we take a quick picture?
Stand right here. What do you think?
Uh, yeah. I'm sure the fire marshal would have something to say.
Yeah. Hey, guys, come over here.
Yes, exactly.
Unless you want to be...
Steve, we can't see you.
Steve, I can't see you, buddy.
Right.
One, two, three. One, two, three. There we go. Thanks, guys.
So the next item on the agenda is 3.03, Champions of Character Spring Athletes. Dr. Nunez?
Thank you, Mr. Reitinger. This evening, we have Julie Braven with us this, where are you, Julie? There she is. Julie is our athletics director at the high school. We're very proud to have you here tonight, and I'll turn it over to you to do the champions of character. And congratulations to all of our champions in advance of Ms. Braven's comments.
I just wanted, I'm not going to say much because you're the one, they're the ones you want to hear, but we're just extremely proud of them. They represent the positive athletic culture that we want in Mason Athletics, and they are the best of the best of it. So they're going to come up and introduce yourself, or introduce themselves, and talk for just a minute. We've got some seniors that need to hurry out because of senior reflections, so they're going to go first.
Hello, I'm Carlos Mercado. I'm a senior, and I represent the Mason Boys Soccer Team. At the beginning of the season, we were fortunate to travel to Gatlinburg, Tennessee through fundraising and a corporate sponsor to compete in the Smoky Mountain Cup, where fortunately we won, which was a great way to start the season, but it really helped us bond as a team, being thrown into a new situation, staying in a cabin together for three straight days. So it really helped all of us get to know each other. And then we went on to win the district, the conference tournament, and lost in the region final, but avenged that loss in the state tournament where we beat that team and went on, excuse me, went on to win the state final. So it was a very successful season, and we'll miss it a lot.
Hi, my name is Laura Whitaker. I'm here representing the girls' soccer team. We as well just were at Radford this weekend. The season started off, we thought it was going to be rebuilding season. We had lost a coach, we'd lost top players, and we really didn't know where we were going, but it turned out to be the opposite. We had a completely different formation, and it turns out that instead of kicking the ball and relying on two or three players, we really came together as a team and brought out the best in everyone. And it really proved to me that, how much of a team sport soccer is, and how important it is to work together. And throughout this season, we've definitely had some moments where we were wondering, like, are we going to keep this streak? There's always that pressure, but this season, we really came together as a team. We had one loss to Madison County. It really shook us, but we picked it up back right up and beat them 3-0 the next time. We faced Maggie Walker, which is a longtime rival, in the semifinals for states. We ended up going overtime and winning off of a goal in the last minute. And fortunately, had a great state final, and it's just been a wonderful time. We really appreciate your support, and it's very nice to, sorry, it's very nice hearing feedback from the community and just getting all that support. Thank you.
Just for the record, she mentioned the streak. You didn't say what the streak was, but that's 11 years in a row of state championship streak.
Oh, hello. I'm Christopher Kim, and I'm here representing the boys' tennis team. I'm very honored to receive this award. I'd like to start out with, although tennis may be a predominantly individual sport where one person plays against another person, whenever I stepped on the court, I always felt my team helping me through every point, whether it was my teammates clapping me on or Coach Roffert cheering me on from two courts away. There was always someone there to help me through and power through each and every match. And I believe it was this camaraderie that, on the team, that made my junior season one that I'll never forget. However, in addition to that, we were finally able to beat Maggie Walker after looking at them for like, three straight years. And it was really satisfying, and then we went on to win the state championship. And although the season is done, and I'm just a little sad, I'm glad and proud to have been part of this team, and thank you.
Hi, I'm Claudia Guzman, and I'm representing the girls' track and field team. Just like Chris was saying with tennis, some people think that track and field is an individual sport, and then you're out there on your own when you're at that start line. But for the girls' team, we definitely came together and encouraged one another to work harder and harder, and with that, we got the results of winning, being the districts, being the district champs for the fourth year in a row, and getting fourth place at states. Personally, this season was really a breakthrough, like, for hard, for working hard. I had to run an event that I had never ran before at districts, but it just showed that it doesn't matter what event it is, like, I truly love to run, and I truly love to work hard, and I'm really honored to get this award. And the girls' team was great at encouraging me, and we all encouraged each other to work even harder. And, yeah, thank you.
Hi, I'm Izzy Anderson, and I'm representing the Mason softball team. And I really, really enjoyed playing this season. I really saw the girls come together, and even if our record didn't necessarily reflect it, we made so much improvement this year, and I look forward to seeing this program really blossom and turn into something really great, and I am really excited to play Mason softball in my next years of high school. And thank you so much for this award. I am very honored to receive it.
Good evening to the honorable superintendents and everyone who came into this room. I'm Li Fan Xu, and I'm honored to receive the Champion of Character Award for the boys' Mason track team. This season, the boys' team has some big changes in the roster. We had the fortune of having many new promising young blood, as well as witnessing many upperclassmen taking new roles in leadership and discipline. Throughout the four months I've been with the boys, I can proudly state that the team has grew tremendously in such a short amount of time. Together, Coach Buck, Coach O'Keefe, Coach Canoke, and Coach Lynn have devoted their time to grow a group of boys into men by making them improve both on and off the track. The values they taught me during the intense races and practices have benefited me to become a more responsible person. It's through their, it's through their encouragements in hard practices that I learned to never back down from tough challenges and always persist in unimaginable conditions. I would also like to address the positive impacts from the seniors. Through their leadership and experience, many newcomers have quickly adjusted to the team and had notable achievements during the season. In addition, although we suffered a few bitter, narrow losses to other schools, we managed to pull it together in regionals and have, and break many PRs in the regionals meet. Bill Comstock broke the state record meet PR with the time of one minute and 56 seconds. In addition, our boys' 4x4 received a gold medal with other very notable accomplishments. Thank you.
I'm Thiel Park, representing girls' Mason tennis. This year was definitely more of a rebuilding season because we didn't have any seniors on our team. It was maybe four returning players, but we definitely came together as a team. We won the district conference and regional titles, and then went on to the state semifinals. And we're just really proud and happy of how far we were able to make it. And, yeah, that's it.
So thank you all. Congratulations. It's wonderful to see the successes we've got, both on and off the field. And so congratulations to all of you for being identified as champions of character, and to the colleague, your colleagues who couldn't make it today. Can we have a picture as well for those who were able to stay?
John, I can't see you. Here we go. One, two, three. One, two, and one more. Thank you very much. Congratulations.
A note for all future meetings, we need to make sure school board member Russell is in front, so we can see her. Excellent. The next item is introduction of student representatives to school board advisory committees for the 2018-2019 school year. Dr. Nunez?
Thank you, Mr. Reitinger. It's my pleasure to welcome several of our students from George Mason High School that went through a pretty significant vetting process to be joining us as part of their student representatives on some school board advisory committees. As part of our international baccalaureate program, civic engagement, civic awareness, giving back to your community is an important component of that. And so with that, I have one, two, three, four, five, six people that I would like to invite up to welcome and give you a sense of the committee that they're going to be joining. And the first is James Weickert. James is going to be, James, come on up. You can come right here, stand, and then we're going to do another picture with all of you. James is going to be joining our Business in Education Advisory Committee. We thank you very much for your service. The Gifted and Talented Committee is going to be joined by Elizabeth Snyder. Elizabeth, welcome. Our Health and Wellness Advisory Committee is going to be joined by Zach Holmes, who is not here. He's out running or something, you know, doing something healthful, I'm sure. Our LEAP Advisory Committee is going to be joined by Evelyn DeRoz. Evelyn, welcome. Narika Singhvi is going to be joining our Special Education Advisory Committee. Welcome. And our last advisory committee is, DeCab, is going to be joined by Shay Rayak. Shay, welcome.
Thank you all. I can't tell you how important it is to all of us to have you on these boards and commissions. The contributions of the student representatives have been great in the past, so welcome. We're glad to have you, and please come up for a photograph.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you all. We'll move to the next agenda item, which is appointment of student representative to the school board. Dr. Nunez?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. We have a new, before we talk about our new appointee, I want to just take a second to thank Nathan Holmes, who has been our appointee for the last year. And before we announce our new appointment, I was hoping that maybe you could talk a little bit about your experience and some of those great things that you had an opportunity to do as a school board member.
Definitely. So coming in, this, I wanted to do this just to get to learn more about policy and how local government works, and definitely, like, 100%, I've been able to do that by doing this. And we did go through a change of school board, so I've gotten to meet all of you guys. You guys have been very nice to me and treated me very well. And also through this, getting to know more about policy and legal things, I now am going to start my own nonprofit over the summer, so I'm very excited to go through with that and do that also while I'm in college. So it's been very excited, and it's been a very great opportunity to be with all you guys, and I'm excited for Acacia to replace my seat.
Can you talk a little bit about the path that Acacia had to follow to get here?
I mean, personally, I don't know Acacia that well.
I guess I just mean in terms of like, what, did she have to go through an interview process to get voted on?
Well, in terms of the process, so you had to do an application review, which was with a few of the assistant principals, and then you have to get interviewed by another one of the assistant principals. Is that how it went generally? Okay, so you had to write an essay at first, and then you had to get interviewed, and then Mr. Hillis makes the call to the school board of who they select, so, yeah.
Right. Well, as far as the staff is concerned, I would like to say thank you for your service to the school board. You've been an extraordinary asset to us. Anytime there were questions about how things were going, sort of out in the schools, or if we had some things we were thinking about trying, we would try to bounce them off of you. You've been very candid with us, and we appreciate that very much. I don't know if the school board wants to say anything, or, as we rotate our friend Nathan out here.
I'll just say, Nathan, it's been a wonder to work with you this year. We've had a very good time. Your participation has always been valuable, and one of the things that we as a board appreciate is the unvarnished truth we get from the student perspective. And I think that's been something that's been a hallmark of what you've brought to the board. So thank you very much. If we can be of help with advising you on setting up a nonprofit, some of us have done that before. So congratulations, best luck in your future endeavors, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
But let me introduce, okay, so it's my opportunity and my pleasure this evening to welcome Acacia Wykoff as the new school board student representative here in the city of Falls Church. So if you would please join us, you can stand at the podium if you like, because I think that the school board may have some comments for you.
Okay. Thank you.
Perhaps not.
Would you like to make any remarks?
I just want to say that I'm really excited to work with you guys. I think I'm doing it for a lot of the same reasons that Nathan chose to do it. I'm really passionate about policy, and I'm really interested in learning more about how local government works, and especially the school board. I worked, not on the school board at my old school, but I worked with them a little bit in the past, and so I'm really excited to work with you guys.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments from the board?
I was just going to say, you answered exactly the question I was going to ask, which is, what made you want to do it?
Yeah, I'm, I hope to maybe go into politics someday, so I think starting on a school board is a great place to start. And, yeah, I'm really interested, and I'm really excited to kind of be the voice of George Mason in helping you guys figure out what's best for our schools.
Thank you very much for taking this on. It's a, I think you're quite right, the, it's, well, I've never had any other elected public office, it's hard for me to imagine anything that is more political than being on the school board. You hear unvarnished truth from the community, as we were talking about before, all the time, because people get very concerned about their kids, as they should. And so it's a really important thing, and thank you very much for putting forth your time to volunteer to do this. With that, I think that it is our tradition to actually vote in the representatives, so can I hear a motion from the board?
Sure, I'll do it. Do I go ahead and move the whole thing? Okay. I move that the school board approve the appointment of Acacia Wykoff as the student representative to the school board for the 2018-19 school year.
Thank you, second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Thank you very much. I'm sorry to do this again, but we're going to want to find all the photographs. And now we are moving to agenda item 3.06. Thank you very much to all of our advisory committee and other committees advising us for wading through all of the pictures, which went on for a long time, but is really important to do. So, with that, we'll move to the annual reports to the school board and oral reports from Health and Wellness, BIe, LIEP, GT, Decab, and Special Education. Dr. Nunnan?
First and foremost, I just want to say thank you to all of the representatives that are here this evening for your support of our school system, and also for your engagement in each of these committees. I know that it's another night out, and all of you have commitments outside of this, but another night out working on behalf of our school system, and for that, we are thankful. So, the order of operations this evening are Health and Wellness first, BIe, LEAP, GT, Decab, and Special Education. So, we'd like to welcome the representative from Health and Wellness up first. Good evening.
Hi, I'm Laura Gold. I am representing the Health and Wellness Committee on behalf of Sue Democ, who is the chair, but she's out of town, so she couldn't be here. Let's see. So, this year, we really focused on two areas, physical fitness and mental health. With physical fitness, we really believe that getting kids to walk or ride bikes to school is sort of a good thing for their general well-being. So, we worked with the Citizens Advisory Committee on Transportation to organize a sort of Walk and Bike to School Day in May, which was a success. The weather cooperated. Hoping to do that again next year. And then we also wrote a letter in support of the city's grant application for the funds to improve the intersection, that kind of ridiculous intersection of Haycock-Shrevin Route 7, right near the high school and middle school. Hopefully, we'll get that, and we can get more kids biking and walking to school. Much of our time was actually spent on mental health, actually, this year, and the committee has identified anxiety and depression as an area of possible concern for the Falls Church City Schools. So, in our first meeting, this sort of bubbled up, and so from our student representative and some of the staff, actually, as well as some of the committee members. And so, myself and a couple of the committee members went back and looked to see if we, if there was any data in the schools just to sort of say, okay, is rising, sort of this rising anxiety, a real issue? We found that there are certainly some national data that suggests that rates of anxiety have increased over about the half, the past half-century astronomically, but there's been an especially impressive, or kind of non-impressive spike since 2011, which many correlational studies suggest is linked to the advent of the smartphone. It's hard, you can't do experimental studies, or at least we don't know of any, but at least there's evidence that that is at least one piece of what is causing that. But we couldn't find any data. There were a few sort of related things, I think from the school climate survey, one from the Pride survey at the high school level, but there really is no data in Falls Church City Schools about sort of kids' social, emotional health, or their mental health. And so, that is one area of recommendation that we urge the school board to consider collecting some data on the prevalence of possibly anxiety and depression for students in the schools. Because there was new data, and that's what I do for a living, I actually just went and interviewed the counseling staff. It's sort of an easy way to kind of say, okay, is this really occurring? Do they think this is really occurring? And it was very clear that everybody, I asked a very general question, what are the issues that you see? I didn't point them in that direction. And it was the first thing out of every single counseling staff's mouth, that there is a huge problem with anxiety, both in the students and the parents, and in the middle and high school depression, which is typical of sort of the average age of onset for that mental disorder. So, there, we put together a couple of reports which were attached to this. If you're interested, more, there were some other issues having to do with, you know, sort of this mindset of perfectionism, academic excellence, these things that potentially are tied into the rise in anxiety and depression. We also decided to launch a speaker series hopefully next year. The first one is going to be, is internal. Some of the counseling staff have agreed to sort of try to raise awareness to some of the community and families about these issues, and they're going to launch it. I think they announced it this morning. It's June 28th at Mary Ellen Henderson. Hopefully, we'll have some parents come out, and then in the fall and throughout next year, we're going to try to get some outside speakers to speak on issues of anxiety, possibly, you know, the use of technology, executive functions, some of these sort of related issues to educate families on the issue. Let's see. We also wrote a letter in support of the school board's budget request to fund an additional school psychologist. And then also, the counseling, Bridget Kraft has been really great. She's a counselor at TJ. She and some of our committee members have done sort of these Tuesday tips that comes out in the morning announcements. And also, again, the idea is not just to raise awareness of the issue, but to actually provide some really concrete strategies for parents, students, and educators. So, what do you do about anxiety? What is it? Or some other mental health issues. As well as, she has been working on, I think it's called Take a Moment. It's essentially mindfulness, but we talked about kind of creating a language that may not include the word mindfulness, about just taking a moment to breathe, and working, at least at Thomas Jefferson, with the students on just equipping with them with some tools to sort of calm down their nervous system. So, I think, let's see, next year, we plan, again, to hold these series of parent talks. We hope to kind of work with the CACT to hold another Bike and Walk to School Day, but we were hoping maybe do that in the fall to sort of encourage that throughout the year rather than the spring, so timing it a little better. And then again, again, we urge the committee to consider collecting some data on some sort of these potential mental health issues that could be sort of popping up. That's it. Do you guys have any questions for me?
Any questions from the board? Comments? Thank you very much. The suggestion about collecting additional data on stress, I think, is an important one. I know from my own prior service on the Health and Wellness Advisory Committee that the information is in the Pride survey, to some extent, as you suggested, but it clearly is the endemic issue that we face most right now, and has a lot of other collateral consequences as well. So, we'll very much work with the school system on that. Thank you.
Thank you. And I just want to say that since I have worked with schools to do this, and it can be tricky when you collect data on mental health issues, there are a lot of other issues that come in. We provide a couple suggestions in the reports, and then also, you know, there's different kinds of data that can be collected. I mean, that's prevalence data to really look at the extent, but there can also be more informal data, like we chose to do this year, that doesn't have the same issues around it that can, that can really, you know, interviewing families and students, that can also kind of get to some of the potential causes and solutions. So, just to say that there's a wide array of data that can be collected. It doesn't have to be surveys. I know we send a lot of surveys out, so I just thought I would add that. And the committee is really willing and would love to work with you on providing some suggestions on that if you guys decide that that's something you want to focus on.
Thank you. Ms. Go?
And I just want to thank, the committee was really amazing this year. They really put a lot of effort into pursuing a lot of, they pursued a grant for walkability. They really did a lot this year. I would also encourage the board to read the results of that informal talk with the schools that's attached to the end of the year report. There are a lot of things in there that I think are really surprising, that go beyond anxiety, especially a feeling that there's a lot of intolerance in our schools of different viewpoints, which I think was a really surprising thing for all of us to hear. And it's important that, it's important information to get out and for everybody to read and realize.
Yeah, and sometimes that can go along, that intolerance actually goes along with anxiety, because what anxiety does is it activates our sympathetic nervous system, right? And when we're stressed, are we compassionate? Are we tolerant? No. So, I would just say, I was also surprised, but the more I thought about it, the more I think these things are all kind of related. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Our next advisory committee report will be from Business in Education. Thank you very much for being here tonight.
Sure. I'm Gwyn Hegy. I'm with Body Dynamics, Physical Therapy and Sustainable Health Clinic here in Falls Church. I'm not going to go through the report. I'm going to assume you've all read it. Mary Beth and I are just here to answer any questions. I would very, very much, though, like you all to recognize, as I publicly thank Mary Beth and Peter Nunnan for their incredible support this year, being, Peter was at every single meeting, which blew me away, because I've been on this committee for a while, and I hadn't seen that happen before. So, I was very, very impressed, and this committee can't function without Mary Beth Connelly. So, thank you very, very much. Any questions? Good.
Thank you.
Thanks, Gwyn. Our next committee is the LEAP Committee. So, thank you very much for being here.
Hello, my name is Paul Boson, and on behalf of the LEAP Committee, I just wanted to make a couple of points. First, as you all reflect on the past year, and as we mentioned in the report that we authored, it is important to notice that the number of families that are served, either their students are currently served in the LEAP program, or are graduates of the program, is at record levels, and that's trending positively. Okay, so things are happening in our community that I think it's important to be aware of as we think about this special population of students. Then, as we look back the last year, and also as we look ahead, one other important note, and I don't know if it's appropriate, but I'd be glad to yield to either Lisa High or Dr. Nunnan to talk about the Family Resource Center. I don't know whether you've, the board has heard, but it might be useful.
I briefed the board, but feel free to opine if you'd like.
Yeah, I would opine strongly that this is a significant and potentially very impactful development for the families that we're all serving. The idea of a Family Resource Center is a great one. It's been talked about in the past, and our advisory committee, and anyone who's thought about this has always thought it's a good idea. You know, but we were fortunate to have Dr. Nunnan join our last meeting back last month and talk at some length about his experiences in other venues with this sort of structure. And as we think about not only making that a place, but also the kind of people, the kind of programs, also the spirit that would animate the services that would be delivered there, both to students and to their families, I think we have the makings of a very strong vision. And also, we have some person power, manpower, in the form of interns from George Mason University who are helping to stand this up maybe as soon as this fall. So, that'll be exciting as we look ahead at the coming year, and we'll look forward to be able to track that and support it in ways that make sense. And so, last and finally, I'll just say a quick note. I'd encourage you all, as we go through the summer months, you know, minds turn away from school a bit, but as we do think about the way that LEAP families are experiencing a life here in the city and in this country, you know, think about the way the news lands on people. There's a special opportunity that we have as representatives of the district to serve families who may not feel as welcome in this country as they did a few years back. There's a lot going on that ultimately, that's national politics, it's in the media, but it does affect the way that people feel. So, as we think about, of course, the educational services, but more than that, the way that we engage with families, you know, we have an opportunity to do something that is meaningful, and even more meaningful than it has been in the past. So, I'll end with that. Questions, if there's any? Also, thank you. Thank you to Jeanette for serving as the chair last year, and for working on the committee for many years, so.
So, I'll say a couple of things. First, I owe certain members of the committee a little bit of an apology, because my schedule has been so terrible. I have not attended as many LEAP Advisory Committee meetings as I should have in the spring, and I apologize for that. The committee, I think, had some notable successes this year. In particular, it's been a long, a long-term desire of the committee to have a program coordinator for LEAP, and that's actually built into the budget this time, along with the Family Resource Center that Paul talked about. The one other thing I'd mention that I'd suggest people look at in the reports in particular, is the notion that we do want to, I think, as we go forward, make sure that we have the right planning factors identified, so that we don't, you know, we actually track and make sure that we've got the right resourcing across the board, and that, that's not just about LEAP, that's about counselors and all sorts of other things. I think it's easy to adjust the planning factors to say, well, this is what we've got, so this is what we want, but instead, we should make sure that those are appropriately designed, and that we track. And as our, as our LEAP population continues to grow, that we don't short-circuit or short-staff the kids who are in the program who need that staffing. So, thank you very much. I would also like to make my thanks to Mr. Boson for taking on the chairmanship of the committee. Ms. Worsbicky and Ms. Walters were long-term chairpeople, and I think it was an intimidating thing to step into. So, thank you very much, Mr. Boson.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Thank you.
All right. So, next up is our Gifted and Talented Committee Chair. Thank you very much also for being here.
Thanks for having me. James Weatherly, representing the committee, won't, will not speak to the majority of the points raised in the report, but really just want to highlight a couple of things that the committee looked at this year. In particular, one of the areas we dug into was looking at kind of outcomes analysis of past changes to identification. So, as the board's aware, in the past couple of years, we fairly significantly changed our gifted identification to really kind of move more, to both leverage a broader set of tools that could actually kind of identify, you know, a broader set of kind of characteristics, as well as actually get more in line with kind of the level of gifted identification in neighboring counties, where we were running about 2X the level, which kind of really strained our ability to actually kind of provide targeted, you know, engagement with the identified children. In looking at that, kind of, the results have been very much in line with what we expected, and we think kind of it, while the full set of new identification tools will only, really only be used this year, in general, kind of the results have been in line. We want to continue to keep monitoring that, and we think kind of the school board should continue to keep monitoring that, but the results have been consistent with what we expected, and kind of overall, we think it's kind of getting to a more healthy level of identification. One element, though, within the identification process that we would want to highlight is the appeals process, which I think there are a number of recommendations we'd make, that I think will make it more transparent and accessible to families, which right now, there's kind of a lot of feeling that it's not well-understood and more difficult to navigate. So, we'd kind of highlight that as potential opportunity going forward. The other area where we had some discussion on, we'll actually, next year, be looking to follow up on, are some changes to how we, the enrichment in Mount Daniel in particular, which is actually before identification, and because it is before identification, it's changing to a model which is kind of offering services more broadly. We want to make sure that we do follow up on that, just to understand kind of the implications of that, while we think it overall makes sense. Want to make sure that we understand kind of how that is, you know, addressing the needs of the gifted children at Mount Daniel, even though that is, again, before formal identification. With that, would, having to take questions on those or any of the other topics.
Any questions or comments from the board?
Mr. Chair, I guess, I'd like to say thanks to James and to his co-chair, Shilpa, for, and the rest of the committee, for welcoming me on as your liaison. I would like to highlight for the board, in particular, two items. One is the appeals activity that's described in the report, and their concern that James was just raising about the potential for how clear is that to everybody in understanding the process, and also the changes to the K2 enrichment, and what those might look like in the end, in upcoming years. I think something we should be, we should be paying attention to, because it has the potential to make, to make some good changes, but it also is a difference, and we just need to be attentive to the fact that with change, there's always a little uncertainty. So, otherwise, it's been great working with you guys.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next up is the Daycare Advisory Board. Welcome. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. Beth Tuoma with the Daycare Advisory Board. I'm going to be as brief as I can because it's, everyone's hungry, I'm sure, as my daughter is staring at the pile of brownies. So, at the end of another successful year, the daycare, the Falls Church Extended Daycare had 338 kids enrolled, which is really, I think, quite noteworthy and meaningful for those of us who really need this program. It is a godsend and a lifesaver, and we owe so much to the people. It's been a great year for the program. There's been a lot of changes incorporated in the program, especially at the TJ, which is the biggest program. There was a fair amount of turnover, and a lot of work went into sort of getting the program stabilized. Lots of training, all, all hands training, and, and they got, at one point, there was a waitlist of months to get into the daycare. They really get the program staffed up, and everyone is, is ready to go, and they've been able to get, clear the waitlist and get morning drop-in again, which was great, because for a long time, there was no drop-in. But, so I think, we feel really good about where the program has ended up, and we're excited about it. Some of the highlights that I think are really cool are the way that the Mount Daniel program has been run this year during the construction, and hats off to Alaa and Michael for everything that they did. It went, it's gone really extremely well, exceeded my expectations, I think everyone's expectations. It's been, it's been terrific. Some of the things that we're excited about are new playground equipment. So, the Daycare Advisory Board carries a fund, we have an excess, and have spent $450,000 to buy new playground equipment for Mount Daniel and TJ. And so, that'll be going in, especially at Mount Daniel as the construction. We're excited about it. It's going to be installed all this summer. And we're also purchasing lunch tables for Mount Daniel, because we use them too, and so we want to give back to those who give to us. And upgraded some kitchen tools at MEH for the fax room. And so that's all, everyone's excited about that. My, my rising sixth grader told me, I heard that daycare at MEH is super fun and cool. And, and all of that is done with, there was a fee increase for summer, for the summer program, but no fee increase for the sixth year in a row in the program. So it's, I think, the, the staff has been really careful stewards of the money, and, and that's very much appreciated. The financial report, you guys have it, but for the first, for the first 11 months, it's $1.239 million in and $1.08 out, so that's all good news. Again, you know, careful stewards, and so we're able to buy all of the playground equipment and fund the things that we wanted to fund, and still have $450,000 left in the reserve. So, recommendations are monitor installation of the playground equipment going in this summer, continue to monitor on the improvements across the program, you know, sort of the programmatic improvements. They did a, they did a zero-waste day earlier this year, where all of the supplies, all the food, all the supplies were all compostable, and everyone thought that was really cool. We would love to see the, the compost program and the zero-waste extended into the, into the daycare on a more permanent basis. I think that'd be really cool. And my last plea is, after three years, this is my last day as a member of the Daycare Advisory Board, and I have really enjoyed it tremendously. It's a great group of people. We need new members. Right now, we have members across all of the, the three schools, and we think that's really great, and we want to continue that. So, tell your friends, tell your neighbors, tell your families. It's a fun group of people. It's a great committee, and we're, they, they would enjoy it and I think get a lot out of it. So, thanks. Any questions?
Great. Thank you very much.
I have a comment. Just a quick comment to say thank you for your support of the playground equipment at both Mount Daniel and at Thomas Jefferson. Both of those needed to be replaced, and the fact that daycare's been able to sort of step up and step in has been really helpful to, to us as a school system, and also for the cafeteria tables at, at Mount, the new Mount Daniel cafeteria, that you didn't get a chance to see, but it's there. Thank you.
Terrific. Well, I'll, I'll pass it along to Katie, who is truly the one to thank.
Sorry, I thought you were at Liberty Tavern last night, and it turned out you were at North Side Social.
Last minute change of venue, sorry about that. But, thank you, guys. Thanks.
And last up, and certainly not least, is special education.
Okay. So, Jenny York, nice to see everybody again. I'm the chair this year, and will be doing it again next year. This is a great committee, and we had a really good year. We started out the beginning of the year with Dr. Noonan coming to talk to us about his triennial plan, and how that connected and worked in with special education. So that was very nice to kind of do, get a good start to our, to our year. And then, our main focus this year was meeting, we went to, host meetings at each of the different schools, with exception of Mount Daniel, of course, with, with the construction. But at each of the schools, at TJ, and at MEH, and at George Mason, we had leadership from each of the schools come in and talk to us about their, the multi-tiered systems of supports, and kind of talk to us about how that works, and how we are supporting our students here in the school system, and what that looks like when, as they work through the process, and whether it is, they're reaching success with some interventions, or if those interventions aren't working, how they kind of move through that process, and eventually go into a student study, or looking at special education eligibility, depending on needs of students. That was great. The, everybody was very knowledgeable. They had great presentations. My, really, my only disappointment is that we couldn't get other people to come join us. The, they, they put together such phenomenal presentations, and I think the information is so valuable, and I think it is really important for the community to be able to hear that and understand the process, and, and how students are, are being supported every day at the schools. So, we're still working on trying to get more people to come and join us. And then we also went to Jesse Thackeray, and that had to be, for me, that was a highlight. That was one of the coolest visits that we've done. I had never been there, and was beyond impressed with, with the physical plant, with everything that was presented to us in terms of how the preschool is operated. We got a tour of the building. It was just, it's amazing. And this community to have that resource here, and for it to be, it really sounds like kind of head and shoulders above what is offered in, a lot around in Virginia. I mean, it's, it's a leading program, and that needs to shine bright, for sure. So that was absolutely fantastic. Then, another thing that we were fortunate enough to do this year was the Ark of Northern Virginia, had gotten a grant from Foster City, and we, they were able to work together and sponsor a workshop. So we kind of talked as a committee to figure out what we could focus on, and again, since, you know, trying to get people to come to the meetings, what's going to appeal to the broadest group of people. And that being the case, we, we decided to host on executive functioning. And really, the presentation, it was turned into more, I was, I was not expecting the turn, but it was a fabulous turn, in terms of behaviors that, that parents see in their children when they are struggling with executive function, and what that looks like, both at school and then at home, and how they can support their kids at home when they are having these struggles. Because, of course, we know what, or teachers know, we know what it looks like when it's presenting itself in the school, but at home, and the challenges that families face in trying to help and support their students once they get home, they don't have the strategies. And, you know, it's, it doesn't come naturally, and it is a hard thing to understand and know, know how to support the kids and maintain your relationship with your child, at the same time as keeping the expectations high and knowing that we want them to persevere. So, that also was a great experience, and we had over 60 people come. So I was floored with that, and, again, fantastic. And we, we pulled, there were parents, representatives from all the schools, and students, of students with disabilities and students without disabilities. So that was, that was really nice to, to see. Then, let's see here, we, Liz, we worked with Liz. Before she left, she worked with all of our building administrators to get a little corner or spot on each of their newsletters, whether they were weekly or monthly newsletters, going out to have a kind of a spotlight on special education. So we were glad that that happened. Everybody welcome that addition to their newsletter. And then we also, let's see here, we had our first student join the committee this year. And unfortunately, he only made it to one meeting because he got this fantastic opportunity to be able to go to, I, I forget what it was, but an educational opportunity that took him out of state, and so we really couldn't, you know, we couldn't be upset with him for that. But the, the meeting he was at was, was fantastic. It was great to get the student perspective, and I'm really looking forward to working with Marie, I think is her name, this year. So, it'll be nice to have her join our committee. And then, let's see here, we, we finished up at the end of the year, meeting our new director, which we were all very excited about, and Ms. Michael joined us as well, and they went through our, the annual plan, and what happens to all the money, and where does it go, and how, how is it used, and how is it accounted for. So that was, it was very helpful, and it was nice to kind of be able to end our year with, with that wrap-up, and talk about what we want to do moving forward. So, moving forward, I feel like, well, there were two things that we focused on. One was, we wanted to make sure that we said thank you to Parent Resource Center, was one thing that we talked about last year, and the Comprehensive Professional Development Plan. And I know that those things are not all, it has not come together yet, but we were very excited this year that that was, that has, it's a focus, and being addressed. And so that was, that was really good. So that was part of our recommendations from last year, and so the committee was very happy with that. And then we talked about two different things. One was the need for trying to bring American Sign Language into the high school, and the middle school and high school as an alternative foreign language opportunity for the students to be able to achieve, acquire those credits, that foreign language credit, which would also help them acquire the Advanced Studies diploma. I know that may not be around for much longer, but still to be able to take, take that foreign language and add that to their transcript. We all know, for, for those of us that work with students with disabilities, trying to learn another language when you are struggling with decoding, with written expression, with, with anything, with, when you're, when you're struggling with that, when your own language, to have to try and deal with that, and trying to learn a foreign language on top of it, is incredibly difficult. And then, the beauty of American Sign Language is the, the grammar rules are more simplified, it's, it is more tactile, it's more, you know, the kids are moving around, it is, it is not as intimidating. And I don't think that, when I have seen students take it, I don't think they feel as unprepared to take that course, because I know, like, speaking from experience with some of the kids that are, that are going through, that are the same age as my children, who have disabilities. So they're going through the program, and they're in elementary school, in middle school, and those students, a lot of students are able to take foreign language, and are kind of two and three steps ahead of the game. So then, when we reach high school, the students that have disabilities have been working in resource classes and getting support, which they really need, and has been beneficial to them, but they miss out on that opportunity for language. So when they go in with their peers, they're shooting, you know, they're two or three years behind the, behind everybody else. And it's, it's tough. It's hard for them to be able to want to get in there and, and take it on when they don't feel like that they've had that same exposure. But giving, you know, an opportunity like this, I think, would be helpful to many of our students, not just students with disabilities, but that would definitely be a, a big draw for, for our students with disabilities. And then, I feel like I should be pairing up with Health and Wellness. I showed, I don't remember her name, but I showed her my final paragraph in my report, because it was also focusing on mental health concerns as we move forward into next year. And one of the things that we talked about was maybe trying to do in a speaker series. We were pleased with, like we said, the success of the executive functioning that was put on. So figuring out if there's ways, or maybe we could get support from the Foster Education Foundation to maybe fund some speakers to come in and talk about some of the things that we, we said was the mental health, anxiety, depression, substance abuse, also social media addiction and screen addiction, and what that looks like, and how to support our students with that. Because, you know, I think as adults, we even struggle with it, and, and the, the students absolutely do. So figuring out how to educate, not just the students, as I think you all are trying to do in the school system, but to help the parents to understand how to work with that and support their kids at home when they're dealing with some of this stuff. And I think that's it. That, and then just a final thank you to all of you for, for everything you've done. And yay for the budget. We were big supporters of that, and glad to see that we got everything, you know, this is the stuff that we were, we were, we were wanting to be passed, passed. But thank you for all your work, and that's it. Questions?
Ms. York, any questions or comments from the board?
Can I just make a comment? I just want to say thank you to Jenny for her great leadership of this committee. As a new member, I wasn't quite sure what to expect, and she has brought such a positive spirit to this committee, and they're doing great work. And I also want to say thank you for all your support on the budget, and bringing that voice of the needs of special ed students to the table on that. So, thank you for all your work. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. So, that takes us to the close of the committee reports, and we move to part four of the agenda, which is public comments and requests. In accordance with the School Board Bylaw 2.30, the time for each speaker is limited to three minutes. Additional written statements may be submitted to the clerk for dissemination to board members and for the record. I don't believe I have any requests so far. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to make public comment? Very well, we will move on. That takes us to our first closed meeting of the evening. I'll take a motion.
Mr. Chair, pursuant, pursuant to the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, I move that the board convene a closed meeting for the following purpose: to discuss or consider the identified subject matter, personnel under Section 2.2-3711A1, in particular, staff appointments, staff reassignments, staff resignations, staff retirements, staff performance, staff change in position, childcare leave, long-term medical leave, leave of absence, and advisory committee appointments and resignation.
Second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Gill.
Okay.
Who's more energetic than Ms. Russell.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Castillo?
Aye.
Ms. Gill?
Aye.
Ms. Litten?
Aye.
Mr. Reitinger?
Yes.
And Ms. Russell?
Yes.
Okay.
So, about 10 minutes. First, we need to reconvene. I'll take a motion, please.
I move that we reconvene to open meeting.
Second?
Second.
Second.
Good beach at that time. Mr. Anderson, thank you. Oh, in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're back in open meeting. We need to first certify the closed meeting. Would someone like to make a motion?
Read the big paragraph. Okay. Whereas the Falls Church City Public School Board has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote, and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.2-3711B of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the school board, that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with the Virginia law. Now therefore be it resolved that the Falls Church Public School Board hereby certifies that, to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting, to which this certification applies, and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening in the closed meeting were heard, discussed, and considered.
Second?
My second. Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Castillo?
Aye.
Ms. Gill?
Aye.
Ms. Litten?
Aye.
Mr. Reitinger?
Yes.
And Ms. Russell?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. That takes us into the consent agenda. I'd ask unanimous consent to pass the consent agenda. Seeing no objection, we'll move on to item eight, business action and information. 801 is first reading of policies, so let me turn to our esteemed counsel to take us through that.
Good evening. Thank you. We have five policies for first reading today, starting off with Policy AF, Comprehensive Plan. This would, this proposed policy would replace our current Policy 5.8, which language is almost identical to the proposed model policy from the VSBA. This policy requires the division to have a, the division-wide comprehensive plan that has elements as required in the Virginia Code at 22.1-253.13, semi-colon, 6, the, the standard of planning and public involvement. Any questions about this model policy? Going on. Next policy for tonight is JFB, Student Involvement in Decision-Making. This would replace our current Policy 9.3. The language is quite similar in the model policy as it is in our policy, slightly different words, but notes the importance of student input and input and data collection process, and in discussing relevant issues that will be considered by the superintendent and the school board. Any questions about model policy J F B?
Proceed.
Testing how fast I can go here. Policy J G A, Corporal Punishment. This would replace current policy 9.41, clarifying that the school board shall not subject students to corporal punishment, and then also clarifying that corporal punishment does not mean pain from, or discomfort caused by participation in physical education class. Any que-- the one difference between this model policy and our policy 9.41 is our policy, as it's currently written, does give a standard of due deference that individuals, in looking at actions of a staff member, will look at the reasonable judgment of that staff member at the time of the event. I don't think that's necessary to include in the policy, it's not required by Virginia Code, it's something that is left out of policy J G A. I don't see a reason to add it, but if the board were so inclined, we could add that language back into J G A. Otherwise, the policy is almost identical to our previous policy. Questions or comments on that?
None.
The next policy is a new policy, it would not be replacing any other policy, it's Policy I J D, College and Career Readiness. This is a new policy proposed by the Virginia School Board, due to both the passage of a new House bill, and then modifications to the, or revisions to the standards of accreditation. So while the V S B A policy seems to be kind of meaty in getting down into the weeds of what the requirements are, particularly at the middle school level, that almost follows line from line, the revised standards of accreditation that are incorporated into the Virginia Administrative Code. If anyone had questions about where that code was, I know Mr. Anderson had reached out, I'm happy to pass along what the new House bill was, and the revisions to the standards of accreditation, but otherwise, this, this model policy mirrors very closely what the Virginia Department of Education is requiring, as far as academic and career plan portfolios, and academic and career plans in seventh and eighth grade and going forward. Any questions on Policy I J D?
None.
All right. Last policy for first reading tonight is Policy G B B, Prohibition of Abusive Work Environments. This also is a new policy, based on a, a new House bill that came across prohibiting not just bullying, but, let's see, the House and Senate bill requires school boards to adopt policies that prohibit abusive work environments within the school division, which is specifically what the language of this policy does, and clarifying that retaliation and reprisal against school board employees who make allegations of abusive work environments is not permitted. Certainly, we have a policy right now saying retaliation is not tolerated, but this makes it specific as, it relates to abusive work environments, which is certainly something that we wouldn't countenance, but makes sense to have a policy, since the code now requires that. Any questions on Policy G B B?
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
So I have a question in general about that, effectively the last part of what you were presenting. It's more or less whistleblower protection applied to a specific case, and I'm wondering about the policies in general for the board on that, and whether this is something that's necessary to be there, or would be subsumed into more broader policy?
That's a great question. I would take the position that it's subsumed in our local policy, saying retaliation is not prohibited, but the, the bill, as it was passed specifically, requires that there be a policy that prohibit abusive work environments, and prohibit retaliation or reprisal against a school board employee who alleges an abusive work environment. So while we have an anti-retaliation policy in our policies, the, the code section requires the anti-abusive, or the abusive work environment provision to also have a non-retaliation part of our policy, if I worded that correctly, if that makes sense.
To be standalone.
Okay.
Those are it for, oh, Mr. Castillo?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. What is an abusive work environment?
That is a good question, and Dr. Noonan asked me that when we were reviewing these policies. It's not defined in, in the code, it's not defined in any of the bills, or the language I could find from the committees. So that would be up to us to determine when a complaint is brought. And there are other policies that we have that prohibit discrimination and harassment, that an abusive work environment likely would fall into, but if somebody came and said, "I, I'm an employee, and I find that this is abusive," or "I think this situation's abusive," we look into that separate and apart from whether it's a violation of Title IX, or a violation of the Americans with Disabilities Act, or a violation of gender discrimination. So the short answer is, it's not clear from the code, or from what was passed. The other thing that we did change in this policy was, the model policy from the V S B A says, "Any school board employee who contributes to an abusive work environment is appropriately disciplined," without, so we changed it to say "shall be." It's up to the school board, or it's up to the Division to appropriately discipline, not just saying it shall, it is done, saying it shall be done. It's an affirmative act that's required, rather than something that is a given without any authority to do so.
So can, can one staff, can one employee create an abusive work environment with respect to another? Does it have to be something more, something systemic?
The code isn't clear on that, but if you pull from guidance on, under Title IX, for example, comparing perhaps bullying to a hostile environment or harassment, sometimes one event by one staff member might be severe or pervasive enough to constitute an abusive work environment, but it really would depend upon the specifics in the case, what is alleged to have happened, whether there's any imbalance of power, or supervisory capacity going on there. So I think any allegation of abusive work environment would have to be analyzed on a case-by-case basis, as far as who was involved, who might have witnessed it, who might have been impacted by it, was it a one-time standalone event, or a continuing habit or routine that was fallen into, that created an abusive environment for one or more employees. But, but as it's written, abusive work environment isn't defined, and there's no guidance as far as, is that, can that be a one-time act, or does it have to be something that impacts more than one staff member?
And in the absence of this policy now, what, what would we do about an abusive work environment?
Right now, anytime there'd be an allegation that's brought to a supervisor, whether that's a principal, or a director, or the superintendent, that would be investigated, and that would be, there'd be a factual analysis of what occurred. There'd also be interim measures that are put in place, to make sure that the staff member who's reporting is, feels that they're safe, whether there needs to be a separation of staff members, or a different reporting structure during the time that it's investigated. There also would be, as part of the investigation, it would be made clear to both the individual who's complaining, perhaps the victim isn't the same as the individual complaining, so to the victim, and the respondent, or the alleged harasser, that retaliation in any kind is not prohibited, whether that's against our staff members, our students, or our parents.
Is prohibited.
Yes. It's, it's, thank you, is prohibited. So we'd get all the information that we need throughout the course of the investigation, see, do we have all the paper documents that we need, have we spoken to everyone who would have information, and then we'd make a determination, and that determination could be that there was harassment, or there was an abusive environment, or there wasn't. Whether there was or was not a violation, there might be steps put in place, training of staff, changes to policies or practices, and further support available to our staff, whether, whether the complaint is founded or not, there might still be some remedial steps taken.
Okay, thanks.
So Mr. Castillo's questions raise some questions for me. Is an abusive work environment the same thing as a hostile work environment?
Probably. I think it depends on, hostile work environment would, would go back to, I think, is somebody part of a protected class. So are they discriminated against based on their gender, their race, their religion, gender identity, sexual orientation, age, status of a veteran, pregnancy. So, so I think that might, at least under the law, be what is a hostile environment versus an abusive environment, whereas abusive could just be bullying, or made to be demeaned, not based on your status as a protected class, but made to feel badly about yourself, or about the job that you're doing, or the role that you have. So I think abusive could include a hostile environment, but could be separate too, from perhaps a protected class, that somebody would have status under another, probably federal law, that they could bring claim under. Abusive gives a little bit more outside of that, I think.
It's just, it's hard to know what to do with that, because, you know, normally a legislature passes a bill, sort of defines what the problem is, but not always. So, if this, if the code requires this, though, and has not defined what an abusive work environment is, I think we're sort of stuck, living with case law.
And I can look into it further, to see if there was anything that led to these bills being brought, that, that would give us some guidance as far as what abusive work environment is, even if it's not directly defined in 22.1-291.4.
Any other questions or comments? So, on to second reading.
Do we need a motion for first reading?
Oh, yeah, well, yeah, sorry. Could I have a motion, please?
I move that the school board approve first reading of policies AF, Comprehensive Plan, J F B, Student Involvement in Decision-Making, J G A, Corporal Punishment, I J D, College and Career Readiness, and G B B, Prohibition of Abusive Work Environments.
Second. Thank you, Ms. Russell. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Second reading, thank you.
For second reading, we have seven policies tonight, with very few changes from the discussion during the May meeting. First policy is F E A, Educational Facility Specifications, to replace Policy 4.31. There are no changes proposed to this, based on the discussion at the last meeting. Any questions on F E A? Hearing none, going on to F E G. This is the construction planning policy that would also replace 4.31. So 4.31 had construction planning included in it as well. There are no changes from last, from first reading to this version of the policy. Questions on F E G? Moving right along, next is, oh, I almost forgot that one. Policy J C J, Classroom Assignments for Twins or Multiples. This would replace former policy 9.24. It's no changes from first reading, and very similar to what our policy had been previously. Any questions on J C J? F E C, F E C B A is Energy Efficient Construction. This was a policy that led to a fair amount of discussion last time, and the very good point brought up that having mandatory language requiring the priority of adoption of the most energy-efficient plan doesn't make sense. There's nothing in the Virginia Code requiring that. I did follow up with Elizabeth Ewing from the V S B A, and she confirmed that if she were rewriting the policies from scratch today, this wouldn't be included. We had, Dr. Noonan and I put our heads together, looked at, went back to the board's discussion from the last meeting, and looked at what in this policy, if any of it, makes sense to include. And we had proposed using just the first two sentences of the policy, that energy-efficient use in construction and operation of school division is a high priority, and energy efficiency will be one of the considerations in architectural evaluation. That's not required by the code, but does make sense in light of what it is that this board has done historically. You'll note that, under the legal references, I did remove the reference to one of the code sections, since 22.170 has nothing to do with energy-efficient construction. That's actually the code section, which lists the powers and duties of the superintendent generally. So I don't think it belonged in there in the first place, but it, this is different from first reading, in that, at your very good suggestion, we removed a majority of the language that neither was required nor helpful, and likely could put the board in a position where if there were dispute over what architectural plans were chosen, there could be some litigation over it. So I think it's, it's great to remove that, and welcome. Any questions on F E C B A?
If I recall the discussion properly, from the last meeting, it was whether to go with the first two sentences, or whether to not have the policy at all. Any comments or thoughts from the board on that? Mr. Castillo?
I would just answer that question with a question, and that is, would, would this policy apply to the ongoing R F P process, if we were to adopt it, and if so, how?
If we were to, if the board were to adopt it tonight, the effective date would be June 12th, 2018. That means it would be a policy in effect at the time there's a recommendation to the school board on the design builder. I, my understanding is that recommendation will be coming before the board at, I believe, the July meeting?
Yeah, the first meeting in July.
So this policy will be in place. Efficient use of energy in construction was something that went into the R F P and the R F D P, so that's something that, it's my understanding, has already been considered by the five entities who submitted to the R F P, and the three who were down-selected. And the energy efficiency considered in the architectural evaluation, if the board were to pass this policy tonight, I expect the, the down-select committee, who has not yet made determinations, would be reminded, or would be told, and I can be there and can share, that energy efficiency is something that that committee, that makes the recommendation of the board, should consider. So that should be an element of the analysis.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm just wanting to make sure that, as we think about this, we make sure that maps to the future process. And we might say, it's not a high priority, it's just a priority, but, and would the, this, passing this now wouldn't have any impact on the prior, non-down-selected applicants in any way. We're not, we're not moving the goalposts here, or anything.
I don't think we're moving the goalposts, because it was included in both the R F P and R F D P. So it wouldn't be something that presents new information to be considered, that couldn't have been submitted previously by any of the candidates, or any of the groups. So I don't think it changes or exposes the board to any level in that regard, but I appreciate you considering that.
So the question remains, do people want to, I, I mean, I'll tell you frankly, I could go either way. This, I don't think this does anything, I don't think it's used by anybody, so my general preference is probably not to pass a policy that is something we're going to be doing anyway, it's not required by law, but just states a priority that is naturally going to be a part of it. But I, I don't feel strongly, one way or the other, depending upon whether the, the board has a viewpoint on this. Ms. Gill?
I mean, I don't think this belongs in policy. It is my general thought. It's not, it's not really, I don't, I just, it doesn't feel appropriate for our general book of policies, and I think the risk of it exposing us to something by adding this desire in is, makes it not worth including. I don't, I wasn't here for the initial discussion, but it strikes me as something that is almost extraneous, and I would not include it. Even though I highly support very efficient buildings.
Anybody strange?
So I guess I would tend to agree. I mean, I think it's almost a statement of philosophy, rather than a statement of policy, as it's written. I think, I think, we do think that efficient use of energy in construction operations is a high priority, but we've reflected that in the R F D P and the R F P. So to me, it's, I think, it's not something that we need to have, in that respect, even though, as you said, I agree with the spirit of it, so.
Does anyone then think this does belong in policy? This one will not be included.
Taking us down to six policies for second reading. Next is Policy A F A, former policy 2.14, the Evaluation of School Board Operational Procedures. This is another policy that led to a very good discussion last week. The elements that were proposed to be included in the self-evaluation process, that were included in the V S B A model policy, are not ones that are required by the code. All that the Virginia Code requires is that the school board review its performance annually, and then develop shortened and long-range goals and objectives. So the proposal, following discussion last meeting, was to remove the elements that should be considered, or the elements that must be considered in the self-evaluation process, and leave that up to the board to determine what it wants to include in its evaluation of its annual performance. So, Policy A F A, God bless you, is, keeps the first and last paragraph of what we discussed during first reading, and removes the, the other kind of checklist of what elements can or should be considered in that self-evaluation process. Any questions about Policy A F A? I will spell June correctly, and the adoption date, if the board does choose to adopt the policy.
Any thoughts or comments on this? One quick question, Ms. Menzies. Should the school board develops, be the school board shall develop, or the school board will develop? Because develops just sounds like a description of what we do, rather than a command.
I think you're absolutely right. So instead, it should read, "Based on discussion of the results, the school board shall develop both shortened and long-range goals and objectives in search of proficiency." Yep.
And again, I apologize, because I was not at the meeting last month, but does this require a, an output that is then, can be requested by the public to review? Because I can imagine this policy, then people would want to see what our evaluation, our self-evaluation was, and what we've decided to do about it. Is there any output required?
There's not output required under the Virginia Code Section, the 22.178, but to the extent that it's a action by the board, that's an official action that you take, I don't think that there'd be anything to keep that from being subject to, to request under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. So short-- So, short answer is?
Like, how, yeah, do we envision doing this like as an open meeting or a closed meeting?
I think the conversation that we had the last time really revolved around the retreat.
Okay.
And sort of having a moment of self-reflection at that retreat, thinking about what are the strengths and weaknesses of our year? How did we do? What worked? What didn't work? And that would be the extent of the evaluation. And then from there, looking at the current priorities as they line out as part of the school board's priorities and the triennial plan, and then figuring out from there, how do we move with short and long term goals?
Okay.
If I remember that correctly.
We did say we weren't enamored of a rubric or a, or a survey, but...
Right. There was a conversation about the, you know, the VSBA does have a survey, and I think that the language that was taken out sort of frees you up from having to do that survey and instead being more reflective and reflexive in a, in a retreat sort of setting.
Thank you.
No other questions on AFA? Two more. Policy FFA, naming of school facilities, would replace former policy 4.26. There were no changes to this policy following first reading. Any questions on FFA? And last policy of the evening for second reading is FG, retirement of facilities. This would replace FCCPS policy 4.36. As with most of the policies tonight, there were no changes from first reading, and this follows very, very closely to our previous policy. So, it doesn't require any changes in practices or in language for the most part. Any questions on FG?
Well, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Minson. If there's no further discussion, could I hear a motion from the board?
Just a question. Since we decided not to pass that one policy, do we need to leave that out?
In reading of motion.
Okay, okay. I move that the school board approves the second reading and adoption of policies JCJ, classroom assignment for twins, FEA, educational facility specifications, FEG, construction planning, AFA, evaluation of school board operational procedures, FFA, naming of school facilities, and FG, retirement of facilities.
Second. Mr. Castillo? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. That takes us to item nine, future agenda items. Let me open the floor to anyone on the board who wishes to raise a future agenda item for consideration. Mr. Anderson?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to suggest the idea of a joint retreat with the city council in general. Overall, it's to, my thought to enhance communications and discuss a variety of items of mutual interest through the two groups. So, I'd like to suggest that we discuss this in a future work session as soon as can be feasibly arranged.
Thoughts or comments from the board?
How would you see that working?
I don't know that I'd developed a full roadmap of something like that, but in general, I would imagine we'd want to find a time when a majority of each body could get together in the same room and have a, have a discussion of whatever topics are ended up put together on the agenda. And I would imagine looking toward Dr. Noonan and city manager to kind of work out the details of that, and then for us mutually to work out the details of the agenda.
What, how, what areas do you think we, we could grow together on this? I'll, I'll tell you why I'm asking this question in a minute.
Okay. Well, I think we've talked about in the past in many venues, the idea that there are improvements that we could see in communications, and people have talked in multiple venues about ideas for improvement, for instance, for the budget process, whatever that might look like. I don't know that anybody's put a stake in the ground as to what that might look like, but plenty of people have said we ought to, we ought to talk about it. So, that sort of a thing would be an area of mutual interest that I would be interested in talking about.
Yeah, and I guess the reason I ask is, as, as I conceive of it, general government is the province of city council. Running of the schools is what we do, and we touch at budget season, but at the same time, we have pretty distinct roles. And so, I guess the, given that, I guess I wonder if the budget process is, is the main locus of overlap. But beyond that, I don't see, you know, communications, maybe, I, I would view that would be something the city manager and the superintendent could coordinate, but as a, as a deeper philosophical area, I, I'm, I'm struggling to see what we would reach in terms of agreement or ways going forward. Maybe I just lack imagination, so, which is entirely possible.
I, I guess the one thing that also strikes me is certainly there's the distinction of the roles, and I'm not suggesting for a moment that those be blurred, but I think as a whole, school board and general government can do a better job of overseeing the, the city, keeping attention to our roles if we understand a bit better what's in each other's minds and sort of the context of the larger city for us to understand, the context of our concerns on the schools for, for the council to understand. And it's a, maybe just setting a baseline for communication so that when we have to sit down and talk about budgets or other things that really are touch points, that we've got to enhance background for that.
Let me ask a, a question, because of course, we don't need to resolve that this is in future agenda items, whether we ought to discuss it or not. I don't know if any other members of the board have thoughts, but it might be interesting to hear from Dr. Noonan about whether it would be, I at least think of it, and this might be wrong, you're certainly right, Mr. Castillo, that there are very distinct roles, but there's a, there's also a sort of a team building element, and as Mr. Anderson said, a, you know, a value in understanding what, you know, what it's like to walk in the other person's shoes and what their concerns are. I, I don't know if it, if it makes sense to do this, but would this, do you see promise in this or?
I'm, I'm struck by a conversation that we had, and I believe it was at the last budget and finance meeting two weeks ago, where revenue, I believe revenue sharing possibilities was on the agenda as a topic. And there was a significant conversation that went on, not necessarily about revenue sharing as it relates to the budget, but more about how important it might be for us just to get together and talk about our respective goals. For example, the school board and the superintendent have goals that we're working on. Do the city council members know what those goals are? Things, things like understanding how our, how our enrollment fluctuates, sort of that idea of sort of seeking first to understand and then seeking to be understood, sort of playing out. So, I don't know necessarily that we would want to in any kind of first pass, consider getting into deep work around very specific issues like budget development or the like, but instead, maybe, maybe it would be an opportunity for us to come together and talk about what our shared values are for the city and what our respective work is in each of our organizations, so that when we do come together to talk about some of those bigger issues, that there's just broader understanding. So, I think there's, I think there would be some value in us sitting together. Having worked in another jurisdiction that had a similar retreat between a city council and a school board once a year, I will say that everybody kind of walked away from those days feeling really good about the relationship, was never contentious going in, but there's always tension, right, in, in these relationships regardless of how quality they are, because you have sometimes competing interests. And I think walking out of those and understanding how those competing interests sort of play out based on the values of each organization sort of energized both bodies. So, from that perspective, and just sort of historically, I would, I would think there may be some value. But again, I wouldn't want to get into, I wouldn't advise the, the board necessarily to get into real weighty issues, but instead sort of top line, how do we all support the city? How do we, what are the goals and objectives that we share in general? And how do we collaborate and work towards those as a, as a team as opposed to as independent bodies?
So, I might suggest, it sounds like there's a worthy discussion to be had here, whichever way it goes. So, if the board agrees, we can put this on, and I would suggest we actually put it on a work session sooner rather than later, because if we want to do something, the summer is a good time to do it, but when it can be fit into the normal schedule.
I actually think we could potentially add it even next week as a discussion topic only because we have one item on the agenda for our work session, albeit a heavy one, but we do have, have that as a topic.
I think that'd be a great, it might be good just to socialize that with the city council too and let them know that's out there, because I, I think it's worth discussing.
Maybe they'll want to come. We could have a joint session. All right. Pardon? Other comments from the board? So, one thought came up in the agenda meeting that Mr. Webb and I had earlier, wait, actually late, last week with Dr. Noonan and team. And that was, there's been a, a fair amount of discussion about bullying, and the subject came up again tonight at least a little bit around the, the idea of stress in the schools. And of course, everyone knows there've been, you know, a lot of schools are dealing with challenges in this regard. In a sense, that sort of falls within the ambit of the Health and Wellness Advisory Committee, but a thought that I'd had that I raised to Dr. Noonan is, would it be a worthwhile idea, and this again is, do we want to talk about this at some point in the future, having some sort of ad hoc advisory committee that the superintendent would set up? And maybe we don't even need to discuss that, around bullying prevention, that being such a key area for us. But I don't want to either undercut the Health and Wellness Committee if that's something normally on the work plan, but it, it, it feels like an area of, I think, growing importance. And with some of the things happening in the larger political environment, perhaps even more critical.
Way in on that.
Sure.
Just to, just to say that we, I, I think I speak for our team, have identified that as an area that we'd like to spend some focused time on in the, the coming year anyway. So, perhaps adding an ad hoc team to help in that, the advisement of that would be, would be useful to us as we begin to flesh out some of our, our ideas and thoughts around bullying prevention. We spent a lot of time talking about health and wellness in terms of social and emotional wellness, and I think it's a, it's a logical outgrowth of some of the concerns that we're seeing in our system with some of the bullying behaviors. And it's not rampant, but it's enough for us to say, hey, we need to, we need to take a step back and really kind of look at this and observe it and see if there is something more broadly that we can look at from a systems perspective, looking at it pre-K-12. So, I think any, any support that we could get and garner around that for information, I think would be useful. So, we, we would be inclined to want to gather, gather a group of folks to, to do some, some work around that.
Thoughts from the board? And I mean, one of the, there are several options here. One is, since we're talking, I guess, about a superintendent's advisory committee, a superintendent's ad hoc committee, I don't know that that requires any action on behalf of the board, but we could put it on a future work session, or we could simply say, you know, provide our comments now and leave it in the discretion of the superintendent to take action as he prefers. Any thoughts? Mr. Castillo?
Well, I'd say that might be necessary but not sufficient, because I, I think the Health and Wellness Report identified bullying as a piece of the puzzle, but that there's a much bigger landscape. And I think if you're, if you're going to convene something like this, I would say, let's do a, a division wide check of how, how are we doing emotionally, including the bullying? But I, I think that's an element of it. There's maybe kind of a tribalism that we have in certain parts of division, but I think there are other very important components that I think are linked to that. And, and so, I would say maybe, maybe cast a bit of a wider net and, and just look at the state of our emotional health as a division. If you've got, if you think this is worth focusing on as a discrete issue, then I'm happy to defer to you, but, but what I heard tonight resonated with me a lot.
Certainly, one of our, part of our multi-tiered systems of support effort is around the social and emotional wellness of our kids. I think, I think the bullying issue in many ways is a, an outcome of some of the other issues that were raised as part of the, the broader conversation from the Health and Wellness. And as, as we, as I was listening to the report, one of the things that sort of instantly came to mind were the piece around data collection, you know, is it, is it something that we want to look at to do depression screening across the whole division? Do we want to look at doing some sort of youth risk survey? Do we want to look at digging more deeply into interviews with focus grouped kids? And if we do that, what does that look like? I just don't want to, I don't want to be too far behind making sure that we're also taking care of some of the behaviors that are associated with some of that. So, it's kind of a both and, if you will.
So, why don't I suggest that we leave this in your hands for now? And we, we actually put this on a, an upcoming work session to discuss, but come back with your recommendations about how the school ought to best approach it, whether bullying ought to be a separate breakout, you know, whether you want to attack mental health broadly, emotional well-being broadly in schools. And we can have a, I, I don't know that there need to be any votes out of it, but we can have a discussion. It's certainly a subject worthy of further board discussion to hear what your plans are and offer our thoughts and advice and whether we want to take action. Does that make sense? Okay. Any other thoughts or comments from the board? All right. That takes us to...
Just one last thing, Mr. Chair. If, if we are in earnest about the budget process, we probably need to kick off discussions about what that would look like, because that is an evergreen issue, so. But again, I, I think that, that doesn't require any special work session, it's just something we need to bake into our schedule, calendar. In terms of, everybody always says, why, why, either why can't we do the budget differently or why didn't we start on the budget sooner? CIP is always a poster child for something that kind of happens as, as an afterthought. I think we've been, we've done better, but I, I don't think you can start too soon, so.
We, Mr. Castillo, we had a discussion about that specifically at the last Budget and Finance Committee meeting, and there are, talking to the city CFO, there's a limit to where we've got the data to project, but I think there was general agreement to try and start the process as early as possible and give guidance as reliably as possible in the start of the year, but...
And for example, when, when school starts, that'll tell us a lot right then and there, right, with enrollment, so that, that can start the dominoes falling. But, but you're right, that we, we need to know what the numbers look like.
We did, I think, discuss having some sort of, you know, another retreat with the city council to sort of, you know, get us involved more in what the guidance might be, because there was discussion about how, you know, the city gives its guidance without any sense of what our requirements are going to be, and then we give our budget, not without sense of the guidance, but knowing what we've got to do. And there's this sort of, you know, game of ping pong. And there's this sort of, you know, game of ping pong that happens, and if there's a more effective way to approach that.
And I think that was where my, my push was, rather than get into the weeds of thinking about guidance and starting the ping pong match, let's talk about what our, what our major goals are.
Yeah.
And how do we support the city? And I, I think there was some resonance around having that sort of high-level conversation before we get into some of the other things.
Point taken, though, that the, we're doing better than we used to, I think, through experience, but budget is the most painful thing any of us have to deal with. It takes half a year. All right, that takes us to item 10, the superintendent's report. Dr. Noonan?
Thank you very much. Good evening again. It's an absolute pleasure to have an opportunity tonight to share a little bit more about the superintendent's progress towards goals. And, and as I begin my conversation tonight, which I hope doesn't take a half a year, I do want to just talk for a second about the genesis of, of these goals. And I'll take you back 12 months ago, roughly, when school was letting out, and we had an opportunity to meet with the leadership team and the principals and assistant principals. We had an off-site three-day retreat, and we really dug into where, what is our current reality? We looked at data, we looked at, we looked at best practices, we looked at a whole bunch of other issues associated with the division. And as a consequence of that, we began to dig more deeply into the triennial plan, which sort of created the beginning of these four goals that were developed. Because the triennial plan changed substantively from two years ago to the current plan, in that it's less, and I know I'm just reminding you, but it's less of a work plan and more of a strategic forward-looking plan in terms of where we hope to go. Again, it's derived from data, it was shared widely with the community, and we have developed some professional development for our staff this year around those components of the triennial plan, which I'm very excited about. So, so these four goals sort of spurred out of the work of this time last year with the leadership of the division. And these goals, while I'm reporting on them as sort of the superintendent's goals, these really aren't my goals. These truly are our goals as a team. So when I, when I present this, I want you to think about the principals, the assistant principals, the leadership team, and myself all working on them. So as a reminder, the first one was becoming, you know, the premier international baccalaureate school division in the country. The second was around multi-tiered systems of support. How do we, how do we close, ensure learning opportunities for all kids? We talked about closing the achievement gap with our special populations. And again, special populations of students are defined as those that are English language learners, students in poverty, or anyone with, in special ed and, and a 504 plan. And then we had a goal around operations that we were starting to look at. It's been a year of learning for me, to be perfectly honest, and it's been a really fun year of learning for me. And all together, and when I go back and I reflect on these goals, truth is, in many ways, these goals that we set are aspirational and somewhat process-oriented. And when we think about metrics and measures and outcomes, you may not see those as strongly as, as you might in sort of a different kind of process. So tonight, what I'd like to do is to share with you some evidence of progress and, and our next steps going forward. Because at the end of the day, I, I don't think that these aspirational pieces that we looked at around closing the gap, around being the premier international baccalaureate school division, or around providing a multi-tiered systems of support for all of our kids, is a one-year goal. I think these are multi-year, multi-step goals that require us to continue to focus long into the, the night and day on these things. So I, I look forward to doing that. The one piece that is in here that is a little bit more quantifiable is the third goal, and that really is around closing the gap between our special population students and our majority students. And right now, we are still scrubbing SOL data, we haven't received our IB data, we haven't received our AP data. So tonight, we won't be able to report to you around these data points. However, as those begin to come out, I certainly will send them to you and put them out in the public, so people can see, how are we doing with respect to closing those achievement gaps? So with that, sort of as a backdrop, I'll start with the International Baccalaureate Goal. Again, our, our idea, and this was priority one around student-centered teaching and learning, was to ensure that all students develop critical thinking and creative problem-solving skills through the International Baccalaureate Program, all in an effort, I think, to become the, the premier international baccalaureate school division in the country. Out of that, we did end up talking about a sub-goal to explicitly incorporate the components and purposefully teach the approaches to learning, the ATLs, as they are affectionately known, in all of our grades. And our evidence of effectiveness around that was, we were going to show those five approaches to learning in each of our units of study. So you'll, you'll hear me talk about the units of study in all of our grades, and how we identify those approaches to learning within that. So, and then as an outgrowth of that, we would revise the curriculum documents for PYP and NYPD unit plans, also the diploma program, course syllabi, syllabi to incorporate those approaches to learning. So when we go to evidence, one of the things that you'll see, if you were to look at our unit planners, is a significant shift in the way that we have gone through those. We've spent a lot of time through professional learning sessions that Lisa High and others have promoted. Our collaborative teams have worked significantly together around the learning skills, the units of inquiry, and the learner profile within those planners to really align those to the IB program. In K, K-5, we have developed learning sessions that have identified some of the overlaps, and really begun to look at vertical alignment in, in the units of study and inquiry as well, and looking at the interdisciplinary and transdisciplinary themes in PYP. When I arrived, I think one of the things that we have done a really nice job of in the division is doing a lot of work horizontally. So third-grade teams working together, fourth-grade teams working together, but there hasn't been as much vertical alignment as I'd like to see. And one of the things that we have an opportunity to do now with the PYP coordinator that's coming in, with the NYPD coordinator and the DP coordinator, is for those three people to come together and really look at, how does our program articulate from K to 12, so that we can more adequately meet the ATLs across the division and across the grades? So our next steps in that particular goal are to really explicitly teach those identified approaches to learning to our kids that we've identified, and connect those to the profile of the graduate. The Virginia profile of a graduate that was put out last year by the Virginia Department of Education aligns really perfectly, I think, with the International Baccalaureate Program. It speaks to critical thinking, it speaks to problem-solving, creative thinking, communication, and the like. The, the next steps also are to continue to revise our current and develop common age-appropriate rubrics to provide students with explicit feedback around how they're doing with those ATLs. You might remember that we talked about those different passage points at second grade, at fifth grade, at eighth grade, and at 12th grade, to ensure that our students are really seeing formatively, how are they growing within those ATLs? So that, that's some of the work that we've done within the scope of that first goal around international baccalaureate. In the second goal of ours, which is around student-centered teaching and learning and our multi-tiered systems of support, and again, you might remember the triangle that we've talked about a number of times, sort of those tiers of support, you'll see here that our strategy was to ensure equity of access to our quality core instructional program here in the City of Falls Church. And that is, and when we say equity, we mean all kids accessing high-quality, tier-one, best practice, first instruction, so that we are meeting the needs of all kids without having to implement a multi-tiered system of support. Now, knowing that all kids don't learn at the same rate of speed, in the same ways, that we need to provide differentiation, which should be a tier-one strategy, sometimes always isn't, we've developed out of that tier-two and tier-three as well. So you'll see, to continue with that theme of providing that, those tiers of support, we are really working with our principals to empower them to be instructional leaders in their buildings, to work on collaboration, to ensure that, that there is that fair and equitable approaches to learning for our kids, and to make instructional programming decisions that really measure the performance of all students, including our special population students. So some of the evidence that we've put together to really speak to our work around the multi-tiered systems of support is first our artifact. We have a, a new Fast Facts piece that's here that we've, we've showed you before. But what's really great about this is that it's, in some ways, serves as an anchor chart, if you will, for our teachers to be able to see and say, okay, here's what our multi-tiered systems of support look like, and here's what high-quality tier-one instruction is all about. So it keeps it on our mind that when we look at that, we're really talking about a student-centered learning environment, to make sure that we're engaged, we're equitable, and we're developing effective classroom management. We're looking at assessment of student learning in a balanced way, so we're thinking about both formative assessment, and we're thinking about summative assessment. We're, we're working with our students to self-regulate their learning, to make sure that they're doing some goal-setting and the like along the way. And then the last piece that's below the line, but equally important, is the plan and teach for student learning. And that really gets to those IB approaches to learning. So when we have that distributed across our division, teachers can see, okay, what are we talking about when we talk about high-quality tier-one? We're talking about learning environment, we're talking about assessment, and we're talking about planning and teaching for learning. That instructional model, in some ways, is sort of new to the City of Falls Church, because we didn't have sort of three things that we could glom onto to say, when I'm a teacher in the City of Falls Church, here's what's expected of me to be able to do. So that's the first piece around that tier-one best practices for instruction. And we've also begun to meet with our school-based MTSS teams to talk about, what are those best practices within those multi-tiered systems of support? So not just tier-one, but now in tier-two and in tier-three. So if a student needs more support, and they get into tier-two, here are those best practices for intervention. And in tier-three, the small number of kids that get to that next level, here are some of the best practices within that tier as well. So some of the evidence that you'll see here, and there's an opportunity in here that I want to talk about just in a minute, but you'll see things like, we have resource banks that have been collaboratively developed for our teachers at, at Henderson. We have a resource list of strategies that have been developed at George Mason. So out of that, sort of backing up, out of this tier-one learning environment, assessing for learning, and planning and teaching, Henderson, GM have, have developed sort of common folders for what does that look like in different content areas? So what are, what are the best practices in Algebra I? What are the best practices in physics? What are the best practices in English? And in there, in those resource lists, there are strategies for differentiation, there are strategies for scaffolding and the like. It also talks about, how can we use these materials within our collaborative teams to support each other? And then at the elementary, we're using a different approach. And here, you'll see collaboratively creating a tier-one resource bank for TJ and Mount Daniel. So this is where I, I think we have an opportunity. And that is, and, and to steal your, your earlier word, Mr. Castillo, you talked about tribal. One of the things that I don't want to have is, I don't want to have schools that are tribal, that we've got these materials at George Mason, we've got these materials and resources at Henderson, we have these for TJ and these for Mount Daniel, that we need to have a common repository, if you will, for our best practices, that teachers can get into, and they can search by instructional practice, they can search by content, those best strategies, those materials can be meta-tagged to the standards of learning, so that they can be easily searchable. So one of the things that I hope to do over the course of the next several years is develop sort of this common repository for materials and resources, so that it's not just held in Google Docs, right? We, we put a lot in Google Docs, which is really great, but it's not as easily searchable as perhaps maybe a database that could be tagged through meta, meta tags. Some of the other things that we've, we're looking at in terms of next steps are coaching and sharing those best practices. So you've heard me, in the context of the budget conversation, talk about the triad. So we've got now a coordinator of special services, or special education, we have a coordinator for our ESOL programs, and we also have a coordinator for our MTSS program. And those three people together are really going to be tasked with providing that instructional programming for all of our teachers across the system, and giving our folks best practice strategies, providing that professional development, looking at modeling lessons, and providing professional development in other ways as well. So goal three is around work with special populations. And here, we talk about, again, ensuring access, but really talking about, how do we make decisions for the performance that will begin to close the gap between those students that are underperforming and could be performing better with the appropriate resources and the appropriate instructional practice? So here, you'll see some of the evidence of the work that we've done this year to sort of erode at some of those issues. And the first is that 33 of our teachers and our specialists receive Excel training, which is expedited comprehension for English language learners training. We also did PSYOP training, which is sheltered instruction, operational procedures. Each of those are really specifically designed for non-traditional learners, students who may struggle with language, whether they're in special ed or they're ESOL, students who need a more, a, a different style or a different approach. So you'll see different strategies to approach different topics, so it really gets to differentiation. We've spent a lot of time on our early release Wednesdays, providing professional development around strategies for our special populations. And the real wonderful thing about that, and Lisa was, was responsible for pulling all of this together, is that those trainings were put on by our teachers. So we didn't farm that out to experts, we, we brought the experts in our own system in and asked them to provide that, that, that work. Another piece of evidence that we've shared with you previously, but I want to put back on your radar, is the RICU at Thomas Jefferson. It's the reading ICU, or the reading intensive care unit, if you will. And this is an eight-week program that's super-targeted to our students who need support in word study and fluency. They run through three rounds with different people, and through each of those rounds, they're doing different things. So here, you'll see one of our teachers working with four students, they'll do about 15 minutes or so with that teacher, and then they'll move to the next teacher for 15 more minutes, and then to the next teacher for 15 more minutes. And they're getting different approaches within each of those. So they may be doing a focused guided reading lesson, they may be doing some word study, and then some other fluency lesson while they're in there as well. And, and it's been very successful, to the extent that we have some data that shows that our students have grown in their DRA level from the beginning of the year to the end of the year. And that's a very powerful piece for us to look at. So that developmental reading assessment, to try to get those students to grade level, has been increased with those students that have gotten that RICU approach. Other evidence that we wanted to talk about with respect to closing that gap, we have developed an advisory program for our ninth-grade students that are coming to the high school. One of the best meetings that I used to hold, first when I was a middle school teacher and, or middle school principal, and then when I was a high school principal, were those transition meetings between those two schools to do early identification for students that are struggling, to really sort of staff those kids up and say, what are the needs of Peter Noonan as he transitions from eighth grade to ninth grade? Tell me more about where he is and his reading, or what are his study skills like, study skills like, or what are his executive functioning skills like? And so, once we've done that, now we can develop sort of an advisory opportunity for students to be able to work through that. We have some continued after-school clubs for our students that are in leap, and we continue to do parental outreach and events for our EL families. So you, again, the read and roll piece that has been part of our, our work, along with the foundation, continues to be at hand. Some of our next steps. I, I believe strongly in collaboration and collaborative practices, and I think that our teachers are the best resources for each other when it comes to learning how to teach reading or how to work with other students. We have one school in particular that doesn't have a schedule that allows for teachers to collaborate. So we have teachers that are, and, and what we know is that teachers that want to collaborate will find a way to collaborate, but they do it outside of school, or they do it at lunch, or they do it on the soccer field, wherever it is. But I believe that we have a responsibility to codify that time for our teachers, to provide that opportunity for them to collaborate if it's important to us. So we're making scheduling adjustments at Mount Daniel next year, so that those kindergarten teachers can like, can collaborate with each other, and the first-grade teachers can collaborate with each other as well. We're continuing to tweak our master schedule, again, to allow students to come in and come out of RICU or different intervention practices. Our coaches, and that's sort of what we're calling those instructional, that instructional triad, in some ways are, it's a coaching model, because they're going to be going out to schools and working with teachers, working with best practices, and that, that also includes our CTLs, our collaborative team leaders, working with that triad too, so that we continue to share the message... leaders, working with that triad too, so that we continue to share the message across the division. Increasing participation in our early intervention program, our ERE program. And then we are supporting the Family Resource Center. And that is just a quick update on that today. The students from George Mason University are doing the interviews. We're here. They met with all of the ESOL teachers in the division and interviewed them, and also interviewed all of the social workers this morning as well to hear from them about what they believe our parents' needs are, our students' needs are, and what they are looking for in a family resource center. And now those students will go out into the community and talk to the parents. And what's interesting is, are the needs matching? Do we believe the needs are what the parents believe the needs are? And so we'll get a chance to sort of hear that as well. And then the last goal is the operational goal. And here, we did try to put some metrics together, and again, we're sort of still in process. And part of the reason that we're in process is that we have begun to identify what are the best practices that are out there, what are some of those industry standards, but we haven't been able to systematically codify that. So I believe that this is, again, something that we need to continue to focus on between now and 2020. And so you'll see things like developing baseline measures with support from industry standards. So our own Richard Kane and Nancy Hendrickson have gone out. They've looked at what are those best practices in food services that are out there. Nancy's looked at what are the best practices in transportation that are out there and are beginning to write those down and figure out how are we compared to what those international, or national or international best practices are. We are completing the formal and informal surveys around business operation. So Kristen has been working diligently with department heads to identify what are their processes and procedures so that we can then also continue that conversation to figure out how does that match with what industry standard is. The next piece of that in evidence is we've provided contracts to our, just in terms of finding efficiency, provided contracts to our employees electronically. We've found a new way, just as an example, to distribute our MacBooks, and then sold those back to help offset the cost to find some efficiency and the like. Oh, I skipped a slide. Some other evidence here is in our budget process, sorry. We did review our expenditures very closely. And when possible, we, as you know, through the budget process, made sure that we aligned all of our expenditures to the triennial plan. We asked all of our principals to do that in the process, and a lot of things fell out of budget requests because they weren't aligned to the triennial plan. So just sort of leveraging that, implementing those budget reports monthly that Kristen has put together, again, gives us an opportunity to keep focused on where are we spending our money? Are we being effective? Are we being efficient? And if not, why not? We're updating our division websites, and John Brett has been instrumental in helping us become 508 compliant so that all of our visitors, regardless of disability, can access our programs. And we are transitioning from a paper to an online solution for time and attendance for our employees. You might have heard of Veritime. And that has been not without some pain, but one of the things that came out at our last SEEK meeting, which I think was a really powerful story, was some of the instructional assistants and bus drivers that were there said, we really didn't want to do Veritime. We were worried about it, but now that we've tried it, we actually think it's pretty easy. So it's a good reminder that sometimes change, when you don't know what the outcome is going to be, is hard, but once you actually go through with the change, it actually can become more efficient and much easier. All right, am I back on track? All right, thanks. All right. And then other evidence are, you know, we're partnering with the Falls Church Education Foundation. And here, you'll see the developing the food service performance metrics. And then the last bullet is developed a transportation overview that outlines operations. This is where we're really starting to get into the meat of this goal, to identify how are we benchmarking our work. And so Richard and Nancy are the canaries in the mine right now with the other directors to really look at, again, looking at average daily participation in our food services, meals per labor hour, food costs as a percentage of revenue in food service. And then Nancy's been looking at scheduling, our fleet, our age of our fleet, the aging out and the like, and looking at other benchmarks in transportation. And our next steps here in this operational piece is really to develop those benchmarks for each of the support functions. We'll have targets. So in other words, what are the goals that we want to have? What are the outcomes? So how are we currently performing, and where do we want to perform? And then that comparative data that goes along with that. And then really to begin to identify and assess those opportunities that we have to improve our services for students, staff, schools, and the community, which ultimately will result, I think, in a better system. And in some ways, may actually save us, have some cost savings benefits as well as we find those efficiencies. So that, Mr. Vice Chair and Board members, is sort of my update on the work that we've been doing around those four goals. And I'm open, along with the team, to take any questions that you might have. That was a lot, sort of thrown at you quickly.
Well, while people think of questions, I would just note that the collision between acronyms and terms was clear as you went through that, because when you say PSYOPS, I think psychological operations. And when you say ERE, I think substance or procedure. The lawyer's among us.
All right.
Scariest thing for me is when you say PSYOP in that particular spelling, I actually think of something a lot scarier. It stands for Single Integrated Operations Plan if you're planning nuclear war.
Well, I'm glad I said what it was.
It means you take it seriously, right?
So, questions, comments from the board?
I'm getting...
I'll start with a question while Mr. Castillo looks. Obviously, you know, there are things that are hard to quantify, but we're going to be working on quantification measures for each of these goals. When do you think we'll have the, not that I want to overemphasize things like testing results, because as I've said before, I don't really care, other than for special populations, about SOL results. But when do you think we'll get the data back across all of the different pieces? So to the extent data is available for the full set of, at least the first three goals, that we'll be able to have that? Is that sometime in July or August?
I think it's probably more August than it is July. Interestingly, your kids will get their SOL scores likely before we'll have the data for the division. And part of that is that there is some scrubbing of the data that needs to be done to make sure that you don't double-count kids and the like that happens at the state. But Lisa, do you want to?
Yeah, Mr. State, SOL scores will probably come home the end of the school year for your students. At this point, today was the last day of retakes. So now students who were able to take some of the retakes have done that, and so we'll be getting results back coming in. But the Virginia Department of Education also has other components that they look at, and it's usually August before it's really released. But yeah, we're still having a few kids still taking tests.
But as soon as we have it in August, we will, first, send it to you, then what we'll do is also publicize it. But I'd also like to hold a work session or a public session, whichever the board prefers to really, and maybe it's a work session, so that we can really dig in and get into some more questions around the data. Because I think it would be good for us to go through and look at, how did our kids do, and where are their opportunities for growth? And the one thing I would say, and I say this not out of self-preservation, but just out of true change, right? When you think about change management and working, it doesn't happen in one year. We're going to have to methodically plot along with this work around best practices, methodically plot along around this notion of intervention before we can really see significant gains. And it's going to take our staff and our community to sort of come along with us, to say, you know what, we're buying in to this idea of, one, best practice, and, two, intervention structures to support students. So I'm hoping we'll see a bump this year because it's become such a focus. But if we don't, just hang with us.
And IB scores come back mid-July.
Castillo?
Okay, ready to go. So, first thing, best practices. How do we know that we haven't come up with best practices that nobody else has, and we should be recognizing that and putting the word out?
Yeah, I think it's a great question. My go-to always is John Hattie's book called Visible Learning, where he did meta-studies of all of the best practices, not all of the best practices, but a significant number of those practices that have the highest yield or highest effect size in classrooms. So he took the work of Marzano, Bob Marzano and others, and looked at some of these practices and actually gave them an effect, what is the effect size going to be on the work? So we can go back to that and look at the meta-analysis. I think it was 108 meta-studies that were done that were co-located into this book by John Hattie. Now, that being said, there isn't a one-size-fits-all model, right? So we can't say, well, if we use compare and contrast, or we look at class size, or we look at whatever that strategy is that has the highest effect size in all of our classrooms, that we're going to yield the same effect. Because we have kids, like all schools do, we have kids that need extra time and support for learning, extra academic support structure. So what we need to do then is develop a habit, in my mind, of looking at providing intervention, what we think is best practice and intervention, in a short-term way, a week, maybe two weeks, and then going back and analyzing whether or not that practice made a difference or not. And if it made a difference, then we need to codify it. We need to say, this practice, and I know codification comes from code, so I know I'm not using that appropriately, but really be able to say, this intervention structure worked here in the City of Falls Church with this group of kids. It goes in the repository, so we can search it. This practice didn't work, so it doesn't become part of our best practice model, if you will, around instruction. So I think it's both a homegrown model, but it's also looking at what the research tells us is best practice. I don't know if that's responsive to your question.
Well, but I'd even go farther to the operational stuff. I mean, I think of some of the stuff in transportation and food service that's innovative, and I don't think you'll find it anywhere else. And some of it has its own inherent educational component, too. And so I wouldn't want to lose sight of that and/or chase other divisions without first, you know, asking ourselves, how are we as an innovative learning organization?
Totally agree. And that has been part of our conversation right from the get-go. And it's always what's working, and what's working well and why, and tell us about that, and what isn't. And then trying to identify out of that gaps. And then, once there are gaps that are identified, let's look at what some of those best practices are and see if we can fill it.
I got another one. Goal one, it's priority one is student-centered teaching and learning. It says IB Strategy 1.2, ensure all students develop critical thinking and problem-solving skills. And then everything that follows is an input?
Mm-hmm.
But the output, I mean, to Mr. Writinger's question a little bit, is a lot of delivery, but what's sticking on the wall and one isn't. And I think there are a lot of things, you know, some of these summative events in the IB sequence themselves, I think, have inherent value that you could look to, and maybe there are other ones as well. But I do think that piece is hugely important.
No, I completely agree, and I think those are great first places to look. You know, when our middle-school kids are doing the exhibitions, you know, are they showing critical, how are they showing the ATLs? And being able to assess that in that, at that point in time is going to be really important. And that's why we're hoping that we can develop these sort of stopping points along the way to say, okay, at the end of second grade, how is Justin Castillo doing on this, on these measures, if you will, as associated with IB? So it's not just inputs, then it's outputs as well. So we can then go back and say, you know what, he's doing really well in communication and problem-solving, but his critical thinking might need a little bit of support. So how do we provide that now? So that when we get to that next stopping point, which is fifth grade, we can say, okay, and, you know, in second grade, he was on a rubric from one to four, he was a two, how's he doing now? Oh, he's a three. Okay, we've seen some growth. Let's continue to build upon that.
Okay, and then just one final question. The RICU, that's eight weeks, that's sort of a special track, and then you get, you're out of it, so it's kind of a one-time injection of...
It's an eight-week program, and there are usually 12 students, and they are with the reading specialist. This year was a reading, two of our reading specialists and one of our LEAP teachers. And after that eight weeks, we looked at all of the data. In the first round, eight of the 12 students went back to their teachers' classrooms for their language arts block because they no longer needed the RICU they had gotten to a level where they were on grade level. And then the four students who hadn't for the next eight weeks, and we added eight additional students to that group. And we did three rounds throughout the school year with second grade, and we did one round with third grade this year. And we saw progress at each time with all of the students, based on their DRA level.
Sorry. If we had twice as many people in that program, could we do more? Or does this wear off after time? Or does it, basically it provides a little acceleration to get people where they are, and then they'll, do the students stay there, or is there...
Our goal is to get them to their classroom so that they are in the language arts block for the two-hour block with our language arts teacher. This year, the 12 students were in an hour block with the reading specialist, and then they went back for the second hour of their language arts block. So it was a core replacement for part of their morning.
And are we comfortable that every student that would have benefited from that would have benefited, or...
I mean, we definitely looked at the students who needed it the most. And I feel like we had the students, the right students in there. Also during that time, we do have other LEAP specialists and other teachers who are going into the classroom and providing support to students who needed it as well. So we were making sure that every student was intervened on as necessary.
Can always use more resources.
Yes, but I'm always the one who says more, more, more.
If there were people who were left out in the cold, that would be good to know.
But the beauty of having a reading teacher on staff is the hope that they will be able to work with the other teachers to engage them in some of the strategies that they're using as a reading teacher. It doesn't mean that we can get all of our kids into that RICU, because that really is a tier-three intervention program, which really should only represent, you know, if you think about that pyramid again, you know, 100% is in tier-one, 15% or less should be in tier-two, and of that 15%, 5% should be in that tier-three. So if we're really implementing what research tells us and evidence-based practice tells us is best in tier-one, we should have less kids in tier-three. That means that those teachers that are reading teachers should be talking to classroom teachers, saying, in your classroom, try this strategy with some of these kids, so that they're gaining that knowledge as well.
Okay. And one of the things that our reading teachers, is they had morning sessions at eight, and they would invite teachers to come in so that they could build capacity in the teachers, as well as during one of the planning blocks every week, the reading specialists went to grade levels and met with them to talk about strategies as well. And that was at TJ.
Other questions or comments? Thank you, Dr. Noon.
Thank you.
So that takes us to board and student liaison comments. We will start with Ms. Gill this time.
I think that it was all covered in the presentation, so it's Chamber of Commerce. I met with them this morning. They do business. I don't have much to report. Mary Beth, she does an amazing job there, so.
Sliden?
I don't have anything to add.
Nothing to report here. Mr. Chair, I guess I'll highlight the band boosters meeting from last night and just say, I want to relay the, they shared their gratitude with the dedicated funding for the band instrument replacement in issue's budget, so I want to pass that along. They've got a bunch of plans coming up for some good things in the fall, and a number that struck out, stuck out at me was 185 students were in band in the fourth and fifth grade bands combined this year at TJ. This is pretty good.
Russell, any board or student liaison comments? In your case, board.
What?
Any liaison comments?
No, not today, thanks.
I think a majority of us, or at least a chunk of us, were there, but I enjoyed the cappies very much. And then, of course, graduation is tomorrow.
I have a couple of updates that I didn't get to give in the superintendent's report. Can I just do a couple real quick? Just want to remind everybody that I probably don't need to tell anybody this, the end of school is Friday. We're really looking forward to sending all of our great kids off to a great summer. Just a quick update on the George Mason High School. We did do the down-select process this week earlier, is it this week? Yeah, this week, it's all sort of blurring now, this week, and we have cut it from three to two and we will interview two finalists at the end of this month, again, with the hope of bringing you one finalist the first part of July. But I did want to let you know that we are down to two. As you mentioned, graduation tomorrow at Constitution Hall at 5:00, should be a lot of fun. Get there early and find your parking space. And then I did want to also mention, in your materials that you received earlier, you should have received a self-evaluation from me. And I just wanted to say for the public and for the board, that the evaluation that the superintendent is under, it mirrors the teacher evaluation and the principal evaluation in that there are seven standards, just like there are for the teachers and just like there are for the principals. And as that evaluation goes, I have to provide evidence of growth within each of those standards. And I was sharing that with a teacher today who said, "I didn't know that your evaluation had seven standards, just like ours." And so just wanted to put that out there for the public. And then just lastly, just congratulations to all of our students, to you, on another successful year and looking forward to the summer and to getting a good start to next year.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next is the approval of minutes. So I'd ask the board for unanimous consent to approve the minutes of January 31st, 2017, and May 8th and May 15th, 2018, without objection. January 31st, 2017?
Yes.
Okay. We might have been a little more timely on that.
January's done. We'll jump into May next month.
Thank you, Marty. Any objections? Without objections, so ordered. Sorry, that was a little, that was an attorney thing to do. The motion passes. And we have some materials for board review, both the SCCPS enrollment and the monthly budget statement. That takes us to our near-final thing, which is the second closed meeting. Can I get a motion from the board, please?
Mr. Chair, I move that pursuant to the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, that the board convene a closed meeting for the following purpose, to discuss or consider the identified subject matter, personnel under section 2.2-377A1, in particular superintendent's evaluation.
Thank you.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Castillo?
Aye.
Ms. Litten?
Aye.
Mr. Reitinger?
Yes.
And Ms. Russell.
So we will now go into closed meeting.